Good evening. I'd like to call to the order of the Morrisville Town Council Work Session. It's August 8th. The time is 6 o'clock. I want to welcome everybody. Before we adopt tonight's agenda, there are a couple, we have a couple of items need to be rearranged here due to traffic and scheduling. We'd like to start with the Farmers Market, number one. Then we'll go to the Library Update. That's the person that's on their way here. Then we'll talk about McCrimmon Parkway Extension, number three. Morrisville Carpenter Road, number four, and then we'll adjourn. Okay. So if I could have a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
What a motion to adopt the agenda?
Second.
Motion of the second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay. We'll go ahead and start then with the Library Update.
Farmers Market.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. See, I even got messed up. Farmers Market. Yeah, someone keep me honest here. Benjamin Howell.
All right.
Good evening.
Good evening. So this is just a very brief update on our Farmers Market Healthy Food Hub. Just giving you an update on our status so far and sort of what we've done. So as we've completed the conceptual design for the Farmers Market temporary site, we signed about a year ago, a year and a half ago, we signed the MAU between the town and the Western Wake Farmers Market that includes some information on the site location and design and some of the specifications that they wanted to see. We have a detailed site plan that's currently being vetted for official review. We're expecting that to be submitted any day now to begin the planning review process. The Farmers Market themselves have begun engaging in fundraising efforts to supplement the project funding, and the John Rex Endowment so far has been pleased with our progress and will release our remaining grant funds prior to construction bidding process. So they do, they have said they want to wait to release those funds until we're closer to bidding. And then we've also, town staff have started discussing with DFI and the Farmers Market the potential permanent location in Town Center, which we'll talk about more tonight. And the current concept image that we have for the temporary site is shown on your screens here, on the screen here. It gives room for approximately 40 vendors as the space for the community garden, as well as the vendor trucks, and then using, utilizing the existing parking lot for customer and vendor parking. And it gives us about a half acre multipurpose field that's reined with a gravel path that's ADA accessible, that all of this was designed with the idea of it being temporary so that it's easy to replace in the future depending on what we end up doing with our Town Center. So that's really the update we have tonight. Going back to the previous slide, the one question I think we really wanted the council to start discussing tonight was about the permanent location versus temporary location. We've had some initial discussions with both Farmers Market and DFI. There is a, DFI is, believes that they can work on designing a permanent location in the, in what will be the Town Center Green area. And the Farmers Market is open to, to that option to try and avoid having a temporary site and then moving a couple of years to a permanent site. If you recall, under the previous DFI concepts that you've been shown, the, what is shown as our temporary concept site right now would eventually be either a building or a parking deck under the DFI concept. So staff did want to take this opportunity to come to council tonight and have you all sort of discuss that. And Martha may have some, Martha or Todd may have some more to add as well, based on those discussions.
I think Benjamin's correct. His council has periodically talked about this. When we got the Rex grant, the, I think the original vision was that this might be a temporary location. And the Rex Endowment knew that as we were trying to formulate ideas for the Town Center. From, from the Western Wake Farmers Market perspective, their interest was being in the proximate location and establishing identity. And, and so we've tried to stay true to that. We've been very purposeful as we've been doing the preliminary work to bring you designs and options to consider to not spend that Rex Endowment money except for the basic design work so that as much of that money would be available towards the development. But with our preliminary estimates being higher, that's why the Farmers Market, the Western Wake Farmers Market is, is pursuing fundraising options. Putting it in a, a permanent location allows that money to go towards those costs. And, and it does give you more flexibility. We'd want to really make sure that the partner's aware of the timing and that DFI, DFI is here listening. They're really not participating in the conversation tonight. They want to hear your conversation. Their role is still to take your input and bring you back viable financial concept designs. So that's what they're, they're here to listen to both of your conversations about the Farmers Market and the library. So they're incorporating that into what they bring you back. Did I miss anything, Ben? Okay. And I will acknowledge Jerry Cozel, who's with Western Wake Farmers Market and I think who, in collaboration with Brad, who's also back and who has done a lot of the work on this site plan design, are, are here to answer any questions, input that you may want to get from them as well.
What are the decision points you're looking for tonight from the council?
I, I think we really want to understand, you know, is your goal to get a Farmers Market here as quick as possible and transition, or if you want to sort of stay the course and allow it to come through in the DFI model, we might still want to look at some kind of temporary solution to get Western Wake Farmers Market here but may not have these amenities you here. And while they're not here, the Community Garden is also a very valuable partner in this. And we're not excluding them, but, but we're keeping them updated behind the scenes. They're, they're a pretty definite component of whatever we do.
Okay. So I'm trying to figure out what's different tonight than it was a month ago with this. Is it the fact that there's an option now to delay the temper, not, not build here and wait and just build it one time at the Town Center? Is that what?
Well, we've always been looking to explore that, to, to not waste dollars only to rebuild it again. I think what we're really asking you to do is sort of give us some real definitive direction because it affects what you're seeing from the DFI perspective as well.
Okay. So I've got a bunch of questions now, so.
Okay. So let's turn on microphones, please. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Before we go, can we have the DFI model where it sits like in a slide?
We don't have that today. That's what, that's what they're working on. They've left.
Location wise?
Correct.
We, we saw that where it would be like.
They put it into a diagram. When council saw that, they were, they gave some guidances that they really wanted to look and see if that could be kept in a permanent location rather than being moved from a Phase One to a Phase Two.
I didn't get that. I meant to say, like, how much of a distance is it moving, what I'm trying to visualize that?
Let me get some staff to help with some of those questions.
Okay. So while, while they get pulled that up, Liz and we'll work our way down here.
Or the other way to put my question is, can, can this temporary solution be incorporated as a permanent solution into the overall concept of the DFI moving forward? Is that a possibility?
So are you asking if we sighted it here, which is right behind our, our Public Safety Municipal Services Building? That's what that parking lot is. We were talking about clearing this area. You're asking if it could stay there through the DFI concept?
Yeah.
Okay.
Permanently, as, as one of the options. So that there's no wastage of one shot deal, either this or that.
Okay. Go ahead, Liz. And I know we're going to kind of go all over the place here, but.
Well, I guess a couple of thoughts. First of all, I, I thought the Farmers Market would be open and ready to go like by early 2017. So if, if we're not shooting, if we're still not shooting for that, I'm a little disappointed. So that's number one. I was hoping this would come sooner, not later. I think we always knew that this was the, a temporary site. And, and the concept we did see from DFI showed a building, but who knows when that building's going to be built? I mean, that could be five years, that could be 10. So, you know, I'm not one that wants to spend money and waste it either, but I also don't want to wait five years for the Farmers Market to be here. So, so I'm trying to figure out how we balance all that.
Okay.
Okay. So Benjamin, what do you have up there?
So this is one of the concepts from, from DFI that shows the Site One versus Site Two that we're talking about. Site Two is what you currently, where, where we have currently been planning. And then Site One would be the permanent Town Green as part of the DFI concept. The blue buildings are the public buildings. So this is PSMS, and then this is the library here. And so this is one of the reasons we wanted to come to you because with this concept, going on and, and looking, trying to get the Farmers Market sighted here, we could get the synergy with the library at the same time. But we did, we've talked about your concern, Councilmember Johnson, about the timing of it. And so what we have, what we, and we actually met with Farmers Market and DFI folks today and what we talked about there was if this is the direction we want to go of moving towards a permanent site, one, we would want to, you know, I think from staff, we would want the, we see the permanent site as being needed, you know, about the same time as the library. So it wouldn't be, it would be pushed off a little bit, but not, not necessarily five years. But then with, knowing that with Site Two, we would still want to look at, work with Farmers Market to, to see about citing a temporary site here in town for a year or two until we can get Site One open enough for them to be able to move there. We do have a couple of different options with that, with site, with getting a temporary location, whether it be using, utilizing existing parking lots or still potentially being able to clear and grade and grass Site Two for use because it, that will need to be done regardless. So, yes, sir?
Benjamin, it looks, there were two basic DFI plans we were looking at. One was incorporating the 10 acres that we own, and the other was kind of the full-blown, I don't know if it's additional, 15 or 20 acres on top of that. This Site One, is this inside or outside the 10 acres we currently own?
Todd may know better, but I believe it is a little bit of part, a little bit of both.
Okay. I know we, Satish should ask for this to come up. You can see.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I just wanted to see where the site, mostly, so basically right now, the Site Two is where our present Farmers Market temporary would be.
Correct.
And it would move to Site One as the permanent, which presently we don't own. Is that correct?
We own a portion of it.
A portion of it. Okay.
Okay. So, I don't know. I'm going to agree with Liz's just original comments that this was something, and this is kind of a surprise to me that we're having this discussion now when we don't even know what the DFI results are of what they've done. I don't know. It sounds, it's a little bit.
And, and if I, if I could, the reason why we're coming back is because DFI can't produce what you want to see without some of these things because it impacts the design.
Well, I mean, if, we don't own Site One. So if, if, if the whole, you know, greater than 10 acre concept does not work, then Site One does not work. If we're, if we're going to build within the 10 acres that we control, then Site Two might be the permanent setting for the Farmers Market. I don't know, but it just seems like they're, we're, we're asking to commit to something that we don't even know if it's available or not.
And.
That's on the full-blown plan now, right? So that's, that's the one with the, is it 15 acres was the kind of the second part of that? Do we have 10 and 15, or is it 10 and 20?
I believe it was 10 and 10, but I, I'm not quite sure.
I think that is, or 10 and 12, I, I think is what numbers we've been using.
And.
But it was, my understanding, I don't know, but, but what the entire Site Two, but my understanding from, very clear from Benjamin during our retreat was the, the temporary site was technical and unusable because underneath we had the gas lines and we were just grading it. It was practically useless other than like putting the parking lot on, like using it for Farmers Market kind of a stuff. So when you're saying it was a planned residential, it's, that's kind of confusing me now.
Yeah, we've been wanting the gas company to move the gas line to the South Temple route.
Then we can sell this then profitably.
But my understanding is we can, we can build a parking lot with the gas line. We have the Farmers Market there. We can build a building with the gas line construction. And right now, we have something we've grown, we just talked that it's a very close to the library when it would go online with that gas line.
So potentially you're saying if we move the gas line, then this area could, if temporarily the Farmers Market is moved away, then we could use it and, as a residential, sell it, as a residential site? If, if, if needed, as developed, as, okay.
Let's hear from the rest of the council. TJ?
Yeah, just to piggyback on that, I was first very concerned about sort of developing on Site Two and then going ahead and putting a building on top. But then I was told that all that site grading work needs to be done anyway. So by improving that property and that site, it makes it more valuable for the developer later. So I don't think we lose all of those costs because that grading has to happen anyway. So as a temporary solution and shows progress towards something better. We've been trying to get this Farmers Market for a while. I think that Site Two for now is a good start. And it's not like we're wasting money or throwing it away. It's just a temporary stop place to sort of invest our money. And then we recruit that later as the developer comes in and builds on it because we're improving that land. So that's my thought on that. My concern, however, is the Community Garden. We're going to put a lot of effort into that. Is that planning to be moved into the Town Green also? Because I don't think that's necessarily the best use of our space in the Town Green. So that's kind of almost an aside.
Wasn't, wasn't that more of an exhibition garden than, they're going to keep their location they have now, right? And this would be more of an exhibition.
Yes. Yeah. And, and we have, you know, we're, we're certainly not moving, we don't want to move forward without our partners. So I mean, we're, this is, the, the Site One discussion is still very preliminary. But, you know, I don't, I don't know that we would necessarily want to move forward with that without have, still keeping the Community Garden involved and, and giving them the space for their garden. One thing I did want to mention is that even as we've brought this discussion to you for the Site One versus Site Two, we are still moving forward with Site Two for permitting and everything. So we're, we're moving forward on Site Two right now. And, but we wanted to, we thought now is a good time to bring this discussion to council because if council wants to look more towards the permanent site initially, then that will, that affects how we will, what we will do with the temporary site or whether we move forward with the temporary site as we currently have been. So we, we just saw this was a good opportunity. We're not, we're not hitting pause right now, but we thought it was a good opportunity because we do still have a little bit of time in permitting to get the council to discuss this about whether they wanted to, whether you want to move forward with the permanent location rather than, you know, do the temporary and then let everything fall out.
Vicki?
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to state my concern that we are on a time-dependent grant. We need to have the Farmers Market built by 2017. And that was the agreement we made a couple of years ago for the Western Wake Farmers Market to come here. And I feel like Site One is very exciting. It's, it's, it's nice, you know, ideally located, but we do not have site control. That will take longer to get the site control. That will be a further delay. We will not meet our target for the grant, and we will have a missed opportunity. I think we need to deliver on our promises for a Farmers Market to the Morrisville residents. I'd like to see Site Two continue. I don't think there will be a lot of rework because of the way, if we build it in a way that has good foundation, it will add value to a resale if we decide to resell, or we could even repurpose it for town use in another way. There's good parking there today. If we add electricity, which I think we mentioned last time, it could have multiple functions. It could be a spot for gathering, for festivals and so forth. So I don't see that truly as a loss. We don't have any structures identified for Site Two, so there wouldn't be any deconstruction if we were to move the garden at any time.
Can I ask, Martha, on your, on your point about, is, is that true that the grant expires? Or is there, did we get an extension?
We had, well, we, we need to have a meeting with Rex, which was another reason why we wanted to get input. But the point about the Rex grant is we also have limited funds. Currently, this project is not within those funds. And, and so that's just another factor that we've been working with and why we've been working on this design. It's why there's fundraising efforts going on. So even as we take this out to bid, it required a TIA. It's not that staff hasn't been working on this, but we have to follow all the same guidelines as any other developer. But the current project cost estimate is not covered by the Rex Endowment Grant, which is why the conversation about leveraging to the permanent site was important to have.
But I don't, I haven't heard the difference. I haven't heard the grant amount compared to the targeted estimate for Site Two.
And we won't, just like any of our other projects, we aren't going to have, we have an estimate. We're not going to have a real number till we put it out to bid, and that's what we've been working towards.
Okay. Without knowing that information, I still affirm about Site Two. I think we need to deliver upon our promises to the residents. If we have to do some rightsizing for the costs, then we should have that conversation. But we need to identify what is important as a council and move that forward.
So let, let's go around the table here.
Sure.
Thank you, Vicki. Steve?
My preference has always been to move forward as quickly as we can with what the site, we're calling Site Two, just because I think it gives us a place to start. Gives us a chance to provide a site where people can start coming in from around the region and I think helps us sell this whole concept of a Town Center as we work with this plan with DFI. And then I also had the concerns of site control. I would like to be able to hear more from DFI on what their plans are because the last thing I would want is for us to move forward with Site Two and then find out that, you know, it might be better to have a permanent site elsewhere. And then we have to start all over from scratch. So I don't really feel like I have really enough information right now that's going to change my opinion on just moving forward with what is and also given the timeline of the 2017 grant. But for me, cost would be important too in terms of how do we leverage resources now, working with our partner to make sure this happens. And then I think Liz Johnson brought up a good point that I don't want this to be pushed out. You know, if it's five years or six years, then that's definitely going to weigh into my consideration because I want, you know, we've been talking about this for about two and a half, three years now. And I want to see us make some progress. So that's where I stand on it right now.
Thanks, Steve. Michael?
Okay. Well, I've always had concerns about the budget since day one on this. And I, we're back to policy with me. I wish we had a policy on how we're treating development because I've always said that I, you know, this needs to pay for itself, and I thought the grant was going to pay for it. And if it wasn't, we'd hear about it. So if we're extending money on top of the grant, I think that's a discussion we ought to have. But to be fair, I always thought we were going to stay within the budget. But moving on, I would not be in favor of moving it once we've located it. I think that's, then again, I, I think if that's, we're not being transparent. We need to put that in our budget. We need to start putting that in the CIP because if we're going to spend a half a million dollars on this site already, and then we're promising, we're going to say where it's only temporary, where are we going to come up with that half a million dollars for, for the next site or even more? I would think it'd be fine there as far as having a parking deck down the road. I'd rather have a parking deck somewhere else, like next to the library. So when we get to the library discussion, as I brought it up before, I'd rather see it there. I think that's a better bang for our buck. I think then I'd rather have the, the parking deck I think is needed now. I think it's going to be needed for this project. So I'd rather instead of temporarily locating this and then spending a half a million dollars down the road, I'd rather see a half a million dollars plugged into a library parking deck, partnering up with the library if that's possible, like other towns do. So those, that's mine. And I just bring up Mission Creep because again, I've been, I, I don't like treating people, business, one business over another differently than that. And I, and I've said it before, but even though they're a non-for-profit, we're giving them a great deal. And I don't know why we pick up and move it again and give them another half a million dollars. So those are my comments. Thank you.
And if I could, if I could just tag on, is, is the discussion by council was some expectation that the grant would cover the cost of this project? And so we have been very purposeful not to spend that grant, that Rex Endowment grant money that would then put council in a decision of being forced to pay costs over that amount, which is why we, and, and as Rich has presented on this before, we won't know what that real number is until those bids would come in. We did prepare an initial budget estimate and recognized some places that we could save some money. So for example, Ben Hitchings talked to you about the dirt swap, which was a $55,000, if I've got that right, adjustment to the project cost. But it's still high, which is why there's some fundraising opportunities going on. So we're bringing all of that to you before you are faced with a decision to add costs or not have a Farmers Market. It's again why the decision to leave it or move it is important to talk about.
Okay. And I guess, well, let me, let me get a couple of comments in here. So I, I always thought the Farmers Market was going to be a, kind of a no-cost option for the town. And we were going to partner with them. Our, our piece of the partnership was, in this case, it's donation of land for this effort. We're going to use the grant money to pay for the improvements to, to the property, and then they were going to operate it. So I, I'm not sure how we've gotten to the point where we're talking about adding, spending more money than the grant. And I think it's way premature to talk about Site One when we don't have any idea of, are we going to be constrained to the 10 acres? Are we doing the full-blown, you know, 20, 22, 23 acres? I think there's a commitment out there that we've made to the town. When we started this process, we were going to move forward kind of deliberately and, and get this done. I think it's, I think it's needed, as Mayor Pro Tem Rouse said, to start the conversation about Town Center, get some interest in there, get some visibility to those sites. I agree with Councilmember Schragans Johnson that I think whatever we invest in Site One will probably be, you know, realized at a later date. But I, I think for cost and delay, I just can't see picking Site One as an option at this point without knowing a whole lot more about, you know, are we limited to the 10 acres or more? So if you're asking for opinions tonight, you know, we can go around the table one more time. I don't know that I've heard, with the exception of maybe Michael, about delaying. I don't know that I've heard, with the exception of maybe Michael, about delaying it or going to picking a future site to basically build it once.
I just want to build it once, correct, within budget.
And I don't think this site necessarily, if this is where it is, you know, for the next five or 10 years or something, it's a perfectly nice site. There's nothing wrong with it. It's right next to where the town center is going to be anyway. So I'm not, it's not like it's a half a mile from where the town center would. But I would think it would still thrive on that traffic there.
And that's exactly why DFI is, can DFI look into it? Why the Site Two cannot be a permanent site? Why are they always insisting that Site One is the permanent location?
They aren't. That's what we're here to talk to you about, is what do you want? They're not, they want to hear from you. They haven't insisted on anything.
Yeah, that's our decision.
Okay, yeah. I'm going to say, like, you know, are there any, like, technicalities? Are there any barriers for, or are there any reservations that we, like, if we want to move farmer's market from Site Two to Site One in the future? But I don't know. But for me, like, I understand, you know, like Councilmember Liz Johnson, TJ, and everyone trying to do is they want every, the gist I'm seeing is everyone wants to do it as fast as possible. I'm in agreement with that. But what is wrong if we take Site Two and make it permanent in a way, it's not far away, make, give it a permanent home so that it's once for all good?
I'd be totally happy if that was permanent, you know.
Yes. And then, you know, work on Site One, and we can have the future, whatever it comes. And is there any harm in, I'm just a question?
It's highly visible. That's one thing the Western Wake Farmer's Market asks, is they wanted a highly visible location. And I think Site Two
Is right on the road.
Absolutely meets that requirement. It provides them a lot of benefit there.
Until, unless town has a benefit in repurposing Site Two for future needs.
So that is doable, but it affects other decisions you'll make on town center because of the road infrastructure and the layout and the roundabout and the proximity that Ben and Todd talked about, a farmer's market and library in the future. Those are decisions you have to make.
No, we will continue that side, like pursuing this.
If you leave Site Two in place permanently, it affects other parts of the town center project. And that's fine, but you have to recognize that and give DFI the understanding that that's what you want, so they can define that Phase Two. You asked them to show a Phase One that, without a lot of change, could become a Phase Two. So that's why this decision now is important.
The one thing that we haven't discussed, that we are going to discuss later this evening, is the library. And I would want to make sure, you know, at the end of the night, after having complete information about the library and also the farmer's market, that Site Two did not preclude or impact the library adversely. So right now, with the information I have, I like Site Two. But once we have the library discussion, I think we need to revisit if there's any changes.
I think we need to move forward with Site Two and move forward with getting the farmer's market here. I also don't think that in the future, if somebody came and wanted to develop Site Two and offered a substantial amount of money, I think council would need to seriously consider that, and then at that time, move the farmer's market. You know, right now, there's nobody knocking on our door for that, for Site Two. So I would say, let's move forward with the site as a temporary location for the farmer's market, which quite frankly, temporary could be five or 10 years. So, and at the time, when somebody comes along and offers us money for that, well, then we'll deal with that at that time. But I really would like to see this move along here.
And I think, I think if we are, if we're, if we end up with just the 10 acres that we have under our control, I think you'd want to have it on Site Two to get, I mean, you're talking about valuable real estate. Take it out of there, so that we're not, we're not worrying about, you know, what's going to go there, oh, the farmer's market's going to go there. Well, it already has a home.
Right.
And if it makes sense to swap them, and, you know, it makes economic sense to move it one day, then we have to come to those, you know, make that decision. But I guess, TJ, let's get your input. And I'm going to kind of wrap this up. We've got a lot of big things to cover tonight.
I think it'd be fine for us to move forward with Site Two now, and I wouldn't want that to preclude DFI from keeping all their options open to make the best possible town center and the 10 acre or the larger. I'd like to continue to give them the flexibility to do what they think is best and not tie them to keeping, making it permanent.
Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments here?
Yeah, I would like to, I guess, push my luck is, so we've got a concept. We're bringing it forward to get it ready to bid, and then we'll know what the project costs. How do you want us to proceed at that point? Do you want us to not bring it to you unless it's within the RECs endowment? Or do you want us to bring you the concept design?
I think we need to
I think we need to figure it out and see. If you, if you came back and it was, you know, $200,000, we can do this for, and that's what the RECs endowment is for, great. If it comes back at a half a million, I think that's a totally different conversation.
Do you want to see it, or is there other direction you're giving us?
I want to see it. I mean, I want to see what the
You're asking whether it's, even if it's under budget, do we still want to see it?
I think if it's within the RECs endowment money, we're clear on the direction. But we did, we did indicate the project was expected to be paid for by the RECs endowment. So as Councilmember Schlink's talked about, that has been the expectation that staff have been working under. So if we're bringing you a thing that's significantly higher, we don't want to just bring you a problem.
Well, you know, just bring it when you get it, and we'll make a decision at that point, I guess, right? I mean
Yeah, and if you can include how much improvement of the land we might be able to recoup later, if it gets developed elsewise, that would help to sort of
I don't know that we can, I don't know that we can know that.
Part of the concept was what you can do with the money. Give us a concept for that.
So you got direction, let's move forward with Option Two, and hope it comes in on budget. Anything else? Todd, anything on that? Anything else? Okay. Thank you all. Library folks here?
We can have Liz and I, Jason Porter, Wake County Community Services, going to start our conversation off about a library. I don't want to introduce the area to the county staff member, but I would just ask, as he goes through the information, that we're looking for a couple areas of feedback. One is the site location, and it's as simple as, you know, are we still comfortable with it, the site being in the town center? Yes or no? And then, do we want to partner with Wake County for co-location? If we do, you know, what type of program might you be interested in? So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jason.
My name is Jason Porter. I'm the Deputy Director of Wake County Community Services. Our department does include the library system. Joining me is Mark Forsteri. He is our Director of Facilities Design and Construction. Facilities Design and Construction is the department that handles the construction and design of all new facilities within the county. So we are going to tag team this. Originally, we had planned to have Ann Burlingame, who's our Deputy Library Director. Unfortunately, she fell over the weekend and broke her arm, so she cannot drive. So I will do my best to answer any operating questions about the library for you. So the purpose of the meeting is to give you an overview of library services and discuss the siting of the library. Going back and digging through our files, the, we had a discussion on siting the library all the way back in 2001, when the county purchased land for Cedar Fork Elementary School. We actually purchased more land than we had originally anticipated for an elementary school, with the idea that we may locate a library on that site. Wake County, the public libraries, or excuse me, Wake County, the public school system in Morrisville entered into an ILA that if we were to build the library on the Cedar Fork site, Morrisville would reimburse the county for the land. I'm going to fast forward to five years in 2006, when we were developing a master plan. We re-approached the town about siting the library in Morrisville, and that's when the discussion of putting it within town center came up. And so we agreed to work with the town on siting the library in the town center area, assuming that the land would be provided by the town of Morrisville. So at the time, though, the precise location of the library was not known. So out of the 2007 master plan, Morrisville was identified as one of our top priority projects, and their top priority projects were placed in a 2007 library bond. That bond totaled $45 million. We told voters at the time that it would necessitate a tax increase to cover capital and for operating of these libraries, and 74% of voters approved those bonds. The projects that were identified and funded through, or funded through the bond include Middle Creek, Fuquay Varina, Cary, Wake Forest, Morrisville, and North Hills. We also included funds to renovate seven libraries that we have probably stretched into even more libraries in those seven. So it's important for folks that, to know what are the types of libraries that we offer within Wake County. The county operates 21 facilities for public library service throughout the county. And we can really group those main branches into these three categories. Let's call it a regional library. Those are our largest libraries, typically right around 21,000 to 37,000 square feet. They offer a full range of programs, youth and adult. They also open longer hours, have more staff, approximately 19 to 20 staff per branch. Regionals that are in close proximity to Morrisville include West Regional, and we are planning to convert Cary, which is currently the next category, a large community, convert that to a regional library as well. The next category type of library we have is a large community. They are typically around 8,500 square feet for new construction. We range right now from just a little under 7,000 to just about 10,000 square feet for large communities. They offer a smaller program, smaller hours, but we pack as much as we can into the hours and what we have there at those large community branches. They're typically staffed with eight individuals, including two children's librarians, and that's our large community. Our smallest type of library is what we call a community, and they're typically right around 5,000 square feet. Community libraries have four full-time staff and one children's librarian. They offer about six program, youth programs, per week in what we call passive adult programming. That means, what we mean by passive is that we will offer programs if we are asked for adults and that there's availability. And so where Morrisville fits into this and what we're planning to build is in the large community category. So a large community is all new construction that we do now. It typically serves a population within, we define a market area. Typically, it serves between a population of 30,000 people up to 65,000 people. When we look at the current market for the Morrisville library, you're just under the 30,000. And so we think that over time, once the library is constructed, you'll grow into that market area. But we believe that we're fitting the library to the appropriate size and the population which it will serve.
So are we going 10,000, or what's the population?
We plan for initially about 8,500 square feet for new construction of large community libraries. 10,000 is a little, is a little on the high end. We only have one example of a 10,000, that's Cary, and that was built prior to the adoption of these types of libraries in these ranges.
But the reason I ask that is because Marshall, even though the population of Marshall is 25, but we are so intertwined with Cary that every street here and there is like subdivisions of, you know, 2,000, you know, like Twin Lakes is like 3,000 people right there. So we are like, the center is like, we are Cary-Marshall together, so.
When we look and develop market area for libraries, we don't pay attention to municipal boundaries. From our viewpoint, we provide library service to anyone that lives and visits Wake County. So municipal boundaries are not a big consideration for us. So when we develop those market areas, we draw, we assume where, based on where folks live, what is the most likely library that individual would use. So you will have folks that live at Cary's town limits that Morrisville may end up being the closest library to where they live. And if they provide the services that those individuals want, we think they'll go to Morrisville. At the same time, regardless of where we build a library in Morrisville, you may have some folks that live closest to West Regional Library or Cary. And so if that's the case, we think, from our standpoint, they may be more likely to visit those branches. So we take that into consideration when we develop these markets. So talk a little bit about the service investment we're looking to make in Morrisville. The library that we're planning right now is approximately 8,500 square feet. We are looking to have about 67 parking spots made available to that park, that, this library. This is typical of what we look for, for any new construction. I will say that we have some existing large communities that aren't quite in that range, and I can tell you, we are constantly dealing with parking issues in those areas. So if we're going to build a new library, we want to try to avoid those issues if possible. The library will be open just over 3,300 hours a year. They'll be staffed with eight librarians, two children's librarians, a collection size of around 50,000 square feet, or excuse me, 50,000 books, eight youth programs per week, and about 16 to 24 computer terminals based on the area and the community. This service that we are looking to do in Morrisville is comparable to those services that we currently offer in downtown Cary. We have it Leesville and the Middle Creek Branch, which is currently under construction. So I want to give you a sense about what a Wake County Public Library looks like. And so I've got a couple of images, and we'll talk about this, and I'll ask Mark to jump in at any time on these. Mark facilitated the construction of these through his role.
This is, this is, oh, hello. And sorry I was late. Had a little rainstorm out there.
[laughing]
Thank you. This is Leesville Community Library. This is another example of a partnership. Leesville Community Library is located on a park that is owned by the City of Raleigh. It's a 60-acre park that they're developing. It's a Leesville Community Park. And so we were able to work with them to develop the library and then develop some small park amenities. Not every, not every library is going to look like that. This was, we tried to site it so that it was responsive to its context. This is the interior of it. You can see we used a lot of exposed wood and a lot of daylight, and the daylight is, we think, an important thing, and good daylighting and good lighting in general. This is a rendering of Middle Creek Branch Library. This is located, it's actually on the site of Middle Creek High School. Again, this is another, different kind of an example of a partnership. We purchased this site along with, or actually, the school system purchased this site with some additional land. It was four acres set aside, and so this project is under construction right now. It is, I think, 8,800 square feet. Again, that's a, that's an interior view. The idea being, one of the things that we're trying to do in libraries is, libraries are becoming much more of a community center and much less of a storage area for books. So you see a lot of different community activities. One of the biggest ones is services to children and children's programs. If you go to any community library or any library period at 9:00 AM, it will be filled with kids. It's really kind of neat. But nine to 11 o'clock is heavily occupied with children's programs. And so the way that we set our libraries up is in zones where we have, in this particular example, the upper right is the area where the children are, and then the lower part, down toward the bottom, are where the adults are. And then we have some, some areas that are are solids, as we call them there. The area to the right where you can see, there's service area there, restrooms, et cetera. And then, in the upper left is our book circulation area and other type of service area. So, we're not saying that this is what, this is the exact thing that Morrisville will get, but the general components are very similar to this. This is part of our 8,500-square-foot model. This takes us to our first decision point, and I'm going to go back over to you.
Yeah, actually, I want to go back to the last slide to make a couple of points about the operation of the library at an 8,500-square-foot. One of the things that the design allows us to do is that this area is circulation within the library. So, from that one vantage point, staff is able to see what is happening in all, in all parts of the library. Our preference is to have a one-floor facility that has appropriate sightline so that as a minimal number of staff from a strategically positioned point can see what is going on within the library. Then, other staff are either doing programming or stocking shelves or whatever it may be. So, that's a point that I definitely wanted folks to see when you look at the floor plan of this building. All right, so, what we have done is laid out, there are two, what we believe are important decisions that we need from Morrisville to proceed with the library project, something that we've been talking about for nearly two decades now. There's a little light at the end of the tunnel, and we want to try to help get there. Decision Point One is on the land, and we are still interested in the Town Center concept that you all are proposing. And so, you may have seen me at some of your prior meetings where I've been listening to the sessions by DFI and interested in what may be in store for citing the library. So, our decision point one is, will Morrisville provide land for the new community library in the Town Center study area? And for us, this is a fairly simple, straightforward decision. If the answer is yes, our site search is done, and we will work with Morrisville on the site that's made available. We'll formalize that in an agreement that could include one of two options. Either one, a 99-year ground lease on the site for the library. Now, the advantage for the town with a ground lease is that we can incorporate in that if we ever stop using the building for a library, it'll reverse back to the town. Okay? But as long as we want to operate that library, it is the county's to operate. Another option is conveyance of the property to Wake County. We are looking for typically what we, it all depends on site and configuration, but we typically look for three acres, sometimes up to four acres, depending upon if the site is a challenge. And so, that's enough for us to accommodate the building, the necessary parking, the necessary parking, and any other service portions of the, of that site and that construction. Okay? If the answer is no, we would need to reassess the project and whether or not to continue. We typically, whenever we are searching for land, we do not confine ourselves to a particular area, and we may open up and do a land search beyond what is simply identified in the Town Center area. So, we would also look to see if the Cedar Fork site is still an opportunity or an option for us, and, or we could potentially delay the project to a future bond. I will say right now, we are not working on putting together a future bond right now, but we know that our money to renovate libraries is, is starting to run low eventually at some point based on whether or not the county can afford it. We do see that there will be eventual need for a library bond. We just don't know when that will occur and what that will look like.
So, before we move on, I know if you've been in the audience for the DFI discussions, you know that there's a couple of options we're looking at for Town Center, but both of those, I think, have the library at roughly the same place. So, I, I don't, you know, I, I think you've got a yes from us. I'll go out on a limb and say you have a yes from us, and I don't believe there was a large difference in the options from DFI. I'd have to look at their maps, but I think they were roughly the same location.
That was my understanding, that the library was located in the same point, and the design of the remaining portions, for lack of a better term, pivoted around that point.
Correct.
So, we are comfortable with either of the options that the town of Morrisville has been considering.
Right. Well, if I could ask a question about the long-term lease versus conveyance to you, what is, what would a, if we're giving you the land, it doesn't sound like there's a lot of money that would be traded hands in either case. So, are we just talking about a dollar a year for 99 years? Are you talking about market rates, or what are you talking about when you say lease?
No, a lease would be, that's where we get our terms involved, and, and it's a... Mark, you might be able to...
I can think, might be, I might can draw a distinction there. The distinction would be that either you would sell us a piece of land, and that would, could simply just be a conveyance, you know, nominal amount or, you know, or nothing. The ground lease actually is something we're doing with other entities. We're actually doing that with Cary, and that simply means that the county owns the building, and you give us a lease to place the building on that particular site. So, the ownership of the land doesn't change.
Right.
And, and in a sense, that's actually simpler.
Yeah.
Because then, we, we don't get into having to, having separate property lines. So, we have a, we have a building that we own, but it's on your property.
So, what are our obligations with that when we own the land versus not owning the land, like?
Well, to detail that, that's the sort of thing that we'll, that we'll detail in an agreement, but typically, what we talk about is, we'll talk about what we, we maintain everything, everything inside the building. We may maintain the exterior walls of the building. We may maintain out to a certain distance. We can prescribe all that in, in our interlocal agreement.
Okay, so maybe that, I don't want to bog down tonight's discussion on that, but it sounds like maybe another, another discussion and let, let Mr. Gray get involved in that. So, did I, I'll speak on behalf of everyone here, we're saying yes to the Town Center land?
Yes.
Yes.
Seven yeses, okay, so.
Two comments.
Two comments. Don't take it back now.
[laughing] You know where I'm going. Leesville is beautiful. I love, that's, I love the light, and...
He's the guy who built it, so look at him.
Then I would, for the council, I would just love to, again, the parking deck, we need the extra space for a parking deck, and, and so, I'd be willing to spend extra money, but that comes in the design.
Again, I don't think they're asking for a decision tonight on parking decks.
But if I could, that, that's actually a good segue, because Jason's talked about three to four acres if there's conveyance. One of the factors we're looking at in here is what I'll call some shared infrastructure, which is parking and stormwater that changes that three to four acres to when they're, and I don't want to speak for Jason, but when they're, they're talking about a piece of land because they don't know about all of those environmental things and how they fit in. So, when we get to the DFI conversation, it's making sure everything that needs to be there is there rather than some specific three to four acres.
Yeah, I, the way I would describe it is when, if, assuming this is the site, then kind of have some soft edges on the, the site other than the street, the street lines. So, then we'll design the building, and then we'll take, we'll consider the parking, the stormwater. There may be other things that I'm not bringing up that we may be able to share some of the responsibility in construction and cost on, and we are a willing partner to work with the town on those issues. But those things really fall a little bit further in the process, and we don't need to make firm decisions on, on those right now, so.
And I think that's in line with our thought process was, you know, to Michael's point about the parking deck, you know, if we needed one for the greater Town Center and we need spaces for the library, then maybe we're, you know, partner on that and...
Do we have to pay for parking, or is that included in your, is that additional to us? We have to pay for those parking spaces, or that's part of your cost?
Mark, can you talk about the agreement with Cary?
Let me start with just what we would basically assume. If, if we had a site, if we were, if we were just given a site, as Jason said earlier, we have the building, and then we need 65 to 70 parking spaces. So, we would be responsible for doing all that as well as whatever stormwater management your ordinance would require. When we get into shared parking, then the, any portion of a parking that we happen to build that might be shared by the town, then there would be a cost share. If we get into a parking deck, what we're doing with Cary is a little different because, for one thing, it's more or less an urban site in the sense that it's kind of a constrained site, and they have parking needs that are, that go far beyond our library. They have a, they have a town, they still need parking for their art center. They have a performing, performing arts area, and then they're also planning two future buildings. So, they realize that the most efficient way for them to provide parking for everybody was to, to build a parking deck, and we're, we're actually building, designing and building the building and the parking deck on their behalf with their input. So, it's, and we've got a, right now, we're under a memorandum of understanding, which Jason will describe. That'll transition to a, in our local agreement once we get our bid numbers in. So, in that particular arrangement, the county's building the library, the town is building the parking deck, but we're contributing about 10 to 12% of the cost of the parking deck since we're going to be parking a certain amount of people there, a certain amount of vehicles there. So, if that kind of generally...
Right, just the timeline was more, I was considering just for the council to predict when the next decision point might happen on that.
Well, I think also, we've got a, we've actually got a timeline that we talk about a little bit later in the presentation, so that might give you a little bit of a parameter for how that would work.
Did you have a quick question to cut you off?
One question I, I was curious as to the Holly Springs Library, is that a community library or...
Yes, that's a community library.
Okay, and what's interesting there is they built it near their art center, so it's sort of, isn't it close to their...
What, what we did was, I did that one too.
Oh, that's really nice.
That is, that's a combined building where you have a, a library and a cultural, cultural arts center is what we built. It's all, it's all built as one building, and then there's a shared lobby. So, the lobby area is, is shared, and the restrooms were shared, and so, everything is kind of in that, in that entry area. So, if you come in off the parking lot, you go to the left, that's the cultural area which has classrooms, a kitchen, and a theater. If you go to the right, you go to the library. So, that's a possibility here too.
On the screen, I have a, this is a floor plan of Holly Springs.
Do you, do you know what the town was for that?
The way that we did that was, there was, now, again, this was 2005 when we bid this, so this was a long time ago, but the way we did that was we, because they're also, the town also built a road extension as part of that. So, the road extension was entirely on them. That was a, an, an extension and a realignment of Valentine, Valentine Street. We, there was a cost of the building, and we, we determined by square footage allocation that the town paid 58%, and we paid 42%. The way that works, again, that's a town site, a ground lease to the county, the county owns the building, and then leases back the cultural center to the town. So, it sounds complicated, but it works.
But do you know what the, the cost to the town was?
The town, I believe, I just looked at that today, fortunately, and the cost of the town was, as I recall, between 3.5 and 4 million, depending on what you're talking about. I think 4 million gets absolutely everything, including design, the roadway, the building, furniture, everything.
And how big of a building was that?
The whole building was about 20, the, the towns, well, I was going to say, the whole building was about 20,000 square, 19, 20,000 square feet. The town had 11, and the county had eight, so, or 12 and seven.
Mr. Grumel, this may help you. On the Marshall Library project, the county is budgeting $400 to $450 per square foot. So, if we wanted to partner and have space, especially if we wanted to go vertical, it would probably be on the 450 because of the elevator and the stuff.
And that's why I was a little...
Let me, let me, that is, that is, that assumes that not only are you adding to the square footage of the building, but you're also adding to the other site support for the building. So, it's not just the building itself, it's additional parking, it's design, it's upfitting the building, it's the whole deal. So, if you're...
Four hundred fifty dollars?
Approximately.
Approximately. It all depends on design.
It's built out. I mean, that's...
Remember, this is everything, including the site.
Yeah.
So, costs have escalated. So, what I'm telling you, remember, that's why I was hugging to tell you that it was $4 million. That was in 2005, so 10 years ago, costs have escalated perhaps 100% since then.
Easy.
Easy.
All right, so, decision point two is going to be on the building, and the graphic that we have on here shows a floor plan for Holly Springs. This was the last project that we partnered with the municipality on to construct. So, the, the question we have is, does Morrisville want to partner with Wake County to expand the building for additional use? If the answer is yes, then we would look at the agreements that we would need to put in place, and we would expand those agreements to talk about the development of the product, program scope, shared use of the land and the parking, the service side of a library, and I, I'll come back to this point in just a second. Payment of development fees, order of magnitude cost, and then presentations to the town council for initial approval. If the answer is no, then we will go about designing the library the way we typically design a standalone facility. What I would, Mark, I'm going to put you on the spot a little bit. Talking about Holly Springs and some earlier conversations we had, I think it would be good for you to share with them the evolution of that project and how we started with a blank piece of property up to what we have now.
Okay. Fortunately, I stumbled through that when we talked about it this morning, so I think I can remember it a little bit better now. The town had a identified piece of property, which was a former park. That was the property that they, and I don't remember what the acreage was for it, but we, the first thing we did was, we had some preliminary planning sessions with the town that we facilitated and our consultant, a design consultant facilitated, where we talked with the town about what, what is it that you would like to see here? And I think there was a, I seem to recall there was a little work session with, with council. They may have had community involvement on that, but they determined a list of what, what things they'd like to see there, and at the top of the list were a theater, classrooms, and they were interested in having a catering kitchen, or actually, even, even more than that, it's actually a, it's in between a full-service kitchen and a catering kitchen, but the idea was so that they could have cooking classes there. And so, we began to develop the program around that, and there was a, the very initial study was whether this was two buildings or one building. And so, you know, there was, we looked at the, and that, that gets into how the site is designed, and so, you know, as you, as you, I think, know, the site is very important here, but it's important both for what you're already planning and then for how we would integrate within that. So, would it be separate buildings? Would it be the same building? Would it be some combination? That's the thing that we would do. It's kind of like a chicken and an egg, but we would have to do a little bit of study if, if you're interested in this to determine what it is that you want. We'll get to that point, and then we would come back to you and say, okay, this is what we understand, and, and these are some recommendations, and this is, you know, rough order, order of magnitude, you know, again, we, at that point, we would probably still be at a, at a cost per square foot because we haven't gone in and done any detailed design yet. Around that time, we would prepare a memorandum of understanding, and a memorandum of understanding is, is, he's actually got a slide that talks about that, but that's a more general agreement that just says that, defines the responsibilities for each party. You know, the, the county will do this, the town will do this, we'll work together, and there's some minimal expectations, and that will, you know, we'll agree to, in the case of Cary, that MOU actually takes us through schematic design, and schematic design is important... And schematic design is an important, um, milestone for us because, um, that is where our board, um, that's one of the approval points that our board has. So, we eventually wanna work up to schematic design, but before we get there, we, we will probably have a midpoint in there where we determine what you, what it is, and you folks determine what it is that you want. And then determine, you know, there's sort of a, a go, no-go point at which you say, all right, we are interested in proceeding with this, um, please go ahead and design. And so, then we would take it to schematic design and there would be a schematic design approval at that point, both for the town and for the county. And once we, we hit that point, um, we'll have better cost estimates at that point and then we'll proceed to, um, final design for, um, bid documents. And you'll, you'll see that up on the schedule.
So, what, what I would like to highlight is that at the beginning of the process, Holly Springs needed to identify what are the specific uses they wanted within their building. And so, uh, for us to start going down this path, that is one of the things that we need to know from you all, is what are the range of potential uses you want for the additional space? And that can be expanded or contracted as we go along. But, we, for us, we would wanna make sure that those uses are compatible with a library. And, um, uh, the example that I hear from our library director is, we don't want a bowling alley above, above the library. It would be noisy and distracting for any users of the library. At the same time, we don't want a basketball arena. And we don't want things above the library that could potentially, uh, cause damage such as a swimming pool. So, um, we would wanna make sure that the uses of the site, um, truly are compatible with the use, uh, or with the, are intended to use of, as a public library building.
A question I have, is it always, it has to be above or is it, it can be aside of it? Like, you know, for example, have an extension, senior citizen attachment to it?
So, so I'll go back to the Holly Springs example. Once they identified the uses, we studied the site and what we could do on the bill, at, at that site. So, it started with whether or not it should be two separate buildings side by side. Then they looked at whether or not it should be a two-story building. And then what effects it would have on the site, overall site itself, on parking availability, how it would be laid out and designed, the site plan. It doesn't necessarily have to be above. It could be beside.
Beside.
By side. But, our viewpoint is, or our position is, we want the library to be on one floor. So, the building, you could do something above or you could do something side by side. That's, that's to be determined later.
Or let me ask other way is, um, I've seen the West Regional, uh, on those two and, which has a room at the end where, like, people can go and have, like, storytelling. So, so is that kind of a room in this kind of a library where, like, seniors can go and have some kind of a, a thing or like some, how kids can have a storytelling?
In, um, in the...
New construction, uh, large community libraries, it does not include a separate programming room.
Yeah, there's a, it's actually an open area that's designated, but it's not a separate, it's not a separate meeting room.
There's no separation?
There's no separate meeting room.
I'm just curious because that's that...
But, you, you do bring a good point. I mean, I'll tell you from our standpoint, a two-story building is more complex, the footprint is smaller, but there's more cost involved in stairwells, elevator, um, et cetera. So, if you can do it side by side, similar to what we did to Holly Springs, that's, in a sense, simpler to do. You know, you have more ground area, but I, I think it's, uh, it's simpler to do that.
Simpler equals less money.
I, I think this is another, real quickly, Mayor Mayor, I think, once again, you know, I'm excited that we got, we're at a decision point where we have to decide, you know, whether we're gonna go with the land and town center, cause I think it's a really important driving point then for the continued work we're doing with the town center and DFI. I think, at, at the same time though, I'd like to continue to learn from them as they come before council on their vision and how this sort of weighs into the package we're gonna sell. Because the one differentiator I see with our community library, and I'd be curious as to your experience, since you've built so many, is how close we are to residential, uh, with all of the community living, you know, here. And we've been working on branding Morseville, sort of as a small-town, family-friendly place. So, that's gotta go into a factor in terms of us thinking, cause when I think of a community library in Morseville, I start thinking, you know, music, art, uh, poetry readings, um, family-friendly stuff where, you know, uh, people can just walk there. So, maybe that's a factor that we have to consider, but I think Cary and the DFI and the town center would, I think, enable us to look at what would make this unique compared to other libraries.
Just, uh, from a proximity perspective, I can tell you that, um, all of the ones I've cited are near neighborhoods, particularly, um, particularly Holly Springs, um, and Middle Creek. And Leesville's in the middle of a park, but it's adjacent to a residential area.
I would say that a lot of the sites that we look for and some of the libraries that are more successful are those that are near or within walking distance of a multi-family dwelling units. So, apartments, uh, condos, dense development, um, is a, uh, is a great predictor of how, what your circulation and door count at a library is going to be.
More rooftops closer to there would help in terms of...
We've actually studied this, um, in a way that a lot of other, we can't find comparables in other jurisdictions. But, what we try to do moving forward is cite libraries where they can capture as many households as possible within a ten-minute drive time. We found that once you go beyond ten minutes, the likelihood that someone will leave or go to the library goes down considerably. And so, then on top of that, again, we operate twenty-plus facilities within the county. And so, we look at the proximity of non-overlapping drive times. One of the challenges that Morseville is going to have with a library is your close proximity to a regional library at West and the fact that we're gonna be building a regional library in downtown Cary. They offer more services, more programs, and so, anything we can do at this site to make it more easier to get to, easier to park and get from your car into the building, is going to make this library successful. But, if we do start disassociating where that parking spot is and the front door of that library, it can make it much more of a challenge. And you will not see the visitation that we expect to see, uh, from a Morseville branch.
But, what about other components of drawing people in? Wouldn't that be a factor? I mean, the town green down the road, the town green, other things that would be built around that?
Sure. Doing other things around the site in which the library is a part of that setting, uh, will have an impact on our door count circulation as well.
I, I'd just like to say that I think we have talked as a council about expanding the use, but we don't agree. You know, we have a lot of ideas still. What information do you need for this decision point? Do you just need a, we're interested, or do you need a little more of a shape of a idea?
We've got a map at, or a kind of a, a process in mind that we're gonna share with you at the end of the presentation, um, that we'll offer up. And, um, and I'll save that for the end of the presentation. I wanna, if there's any other questions or additions.
Well, let's go ahead.
Yeah, I, I do have a question. Going back to your slide on the, um, the layout of what a community library is, I noticed you have like a storytime area, but you don't have any classroom spaces, is that correct?
That's correct. There's not a program room typically in an eight thousand five hundred square foot branch.
Okay. Cause that, I think that's where we would need to start, quite frankly. I think, um, if I recall, Eva Perry had a separate room. Don't you have a separate room?
Eva Perry is a regional library, not a large...
Understand that, understand that. But, I'm, I'm thinking of that kind of a room, um, that could be closed off and then used for either, um, young children activities, adult activities. Um, I think that might be a place to start, quite frankly, so...
That's what, that's the reason I was asking, you know, for that and that they don't have it.
Right. So, we would go for that.
For me, like, asking for that room.
Well, that, that's why I asked, to make sure there is no particular classroom space or any closed-off room. I, I know that, that's why, I'm just telling you.
Yeah, I, I think...
Everybody wants classrooms, everybody, but it's just, what other things?
Go ahead, let Martha speak.
I think we need to let Jason finish the presentation because part of it is separate. And that, that adds some different nuances of, of, I, I see Councilmember Gammel is doing some quick arithmetic. It, it's not that easy because it's separate entrances and all that other kind of stuff. Just, and also to follow up on what Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson has, you, you do have that option for side-by-side. Again, that's another factor that affects your urban town center core feel and what you've seen before in some concepts that you need to talk about.
Okay. So, if, so if I can continue with my thought process, I think that's a place to start. I think it's important to realize that this is a very young community with, um, young children and young families. So, I think we need to incorporate a lot of children activities. At one time, we, we talked about having even our own kind of cultural arts center down here or even a, um, um, an outdoor amphitheater. And I know in Holly Springs, you, that, that building on the outside, um, had, um, some features where you could have, it's not raised, but there, there was like a little platform for, um, so, I mean, those are some of the things that I'm interested in exploring as we move forward on all this. And to Martha's point, um, we need to be able to access this on our own. It needs to have separate entrances. I mean, you know, we have a great joint use agreement, uh, at the Cedar Fork Elementary School in our community center, um, where we, we share the use of the gym. And, and we, you know, have good access when we need it and then the school has access when they need it and it's, and it's all kind of separate. So, um, I think moving forward, we need to have those kind of conversations. So, so yes, we need to have, we need to have the conversation.
All right. Okay. So, before you move on, just a question, uh, did you say that Holly Springs was, was the last time you did this?
Was, uh, the last time where we did a shared, co-located use.
And that was something that was designed ten years ago?
Mm-hmm.
When was it actually built?
Well...
Two thousand and six was when it was opened.
Okay. So, what, there's obviously been a lot of libraries built since then. There's probably been the same discussion over and over about adding space. So, why, why hasn't this happened more since Holly Springs?
So, what I would actually say is that we haven't built a lot of libraries since Holly Springs.
Okay.
Shortly after Holly Springs was opened, I believe we, uh, started, um, Leesville and then about the time we were wrapping up Leesville is when the, we had the recession. And when we had the recession, um, um, we could afford the capital, but we could not afford the additional operating cost. And so, um, we put library construction projects on hold that would add additional operating costs.
Gotcha, okay.
So, they were on hold for six years?
Gotcha, okay. So, so there hasn't been, there hasn't been a lot of examples of people doing it or not doing it?
Yes.
Right, okay.
So, from the two thousand and seven series, library bonds that we sold and projects, um, the, of those that are on that list, uh, Middle Creek is the very first one we constructed and that's under construction now.
Gotcha.
And those were projects that were approved by voters back in two thousand and seven.
All right.
And, uh, we're underway on, uh, with planning on Cary and Fuquay Varina and, uh, Morseville is, is up next.
All right. I'll let you continue, thank you.
Okay. All right. So, uh, after decision point two on whether or not you want to co-locate with the building, there's some other additional decisions that may be required. This is, but these things come out during the design phase of the project. So, define how parking will evolve, stormwater management, order of magnitude cost, uh, and any other anomalies unique to the proposed site. That's just, we're, we're open to anything that, uh, that may come our way on this, including a pipeline. So, um, so let me...
Go into review a little bit, yes?
Do you feel bad to explain order of magnitude cost?
I, I think I can explain that. An order of magnitude cost generally exists as a range. That's kind of a, an earlier, um, tool that we use or a, a way that we express something before we've actually designed it. So, a square footage cost might be that, or it might, we might tell you that, um, we expect something's gonna cost from one point five to two million dollars. Or something might cost, um, four hundred to four fifty a square foot. That's what we mean by order of magnitude. It's a, a general range and as we design the building further, then we're able to get you, um, more specific numbers.
So, what I'd like to do next is review some of the potential agreements that may be coming your way. So, the first type of agreement that may come up is a memorandum of understanding. That is a broad document, uh, talking about our broad understandings of what the relationship is gonna be between the county and the town. So, uh, general responsibilities of each one. It would also include some language about the site. We would talk about, uh, that's where the ground lease or conveyance issue would be addressed in that memorandum of understanding. It would include language stating that the county would own the building. And that's important for us because we're using bond proceeds to fund our share of the, the project. And typically, our bond, uh, our bonding agencies want us to own the asset in which we're spending that, those funds on. It would also include some language on the use and that's, gets back to the question I asked, like, what are the potential uses that you see in the space? Uh, it could include some funding commitments related to land conveyance and schematic design, um, what we would share and allocate. And then, uh, the duration of the MOU extends through our design and project bid phase. And you'll see that a little bit on, uh, moving forward with our, uh, calendar or schedule. Other agreements that would come after the MOU is the interlocal agreement. That typically follows the, um, when it is developed as we go through the design process, but finalized after we go through bid. And then, we can tack on the actual numbers and, uh, and then it'll go to both boards, the town council and the Wake County Board of Commissioners for consideration and approval of the ILA. But, it would be more specific details about the site, the building, and so on. If there is a joint use of the facility, the, the next agreement that would follow is a joint use agreement. And that is typically, um, negotiated or discussed while the building's under construction. And, um, as a general rule of thumb, we like to have those joint use agreements in place before a certificate of occupancy is issued on the building. And, uh, our long-term goal on joint use agreements is to avoid trading checks back and forth. And so, what we would do is work with the town and, um, try to figure out what the general responsibilities are and then divvy up those responsibilities proportionally to where both parties feel comfortable in what the other is doing, where the responsibility lies. And then, that way, we're not having to track every light switch, uh, every utility bill and then send invoices back and forth. All right? So, uh, next steps is, we really need a decision by December of two thousand and sixteen for us to stay on schedule on the land and the site and potential uses and joint funding to go through some advanced planning exercises, okay? And then, uh, through that, through that period, county and town staff will work collaboratively to start developing that MOU, okay? So, our project schedule, this is subject to change. Uh, this is what we have built into our CIP right now. So, site acquisition would need to be secured by December of two thousand and sixteen. That will follow shortly with the memorandum of understanding. That, again, that's that broad understanding. Uh, we would then move into schematic design. Actually, let me back up a little bit, you know, on the uses. One of the things that we can do, because there's not necessarily agreement about what potential uses are, um, we can do a facilitated workshop, uh, the county, uh, working with the town to figure out what those uses are. Mike, or Mark, do you wanna...
No, I just, that's, that's essentially what we did with Holly Springs. And I think, um, that part of my memory is getting a little vague, but, um, I think that, um, town staff had, was able to determine a list of things that they, that they wanted to see based on, I think that the town may have, um, consulted the community on that, talked to the, to the, to the council on that. And they came up with a list of things and then they prioritized what, what were the most important things, you know? And then, we, at that point, we start working back and forth because we obviously have a limited amount of space out there. You have a limited, you have limited land out there. So, you know, we would begin to diagrammatically look at, you know, what kind of a block is this, you know? What, what kind of land, how much land do we have? How much square footage would we need for this particular function? For example, if you told us that you really just wanted a couple of, a, a multipurpose room and a, and a couple of classrooms, um, that, that means one thing. Maybe you've got a thousand square feet that you want. Well, that's, that's fairly easy to accommodate. If you tell us that you want several classrooms and, um, a performing arts theater or something like that, then that means something different. Or if there's something in between that, um, you want... Or if there's something in between that, if you wanted a senior center, a large program room and some other ancillary spaces, then that's another thing. So, that's, that's essentially a programming effort that we would do. That's what we call it, is architectural programming. And that's something that we would do as part of that. And what the architectural program does is it, it defines the nature of the space, it defines what area would be needed for the space. You come up with a square footage, and then you can begin to talk about the order of magnitude cost. At the same time, you look at what's available on the land, and you, you're not designing the building, but you're, you're laying a footprint out, you're paying attention to what zoning requirements you have, and that's where we're going to need to have your planning staff involved to advise us on, on what we can or cannot do. And so the, the idea is that, when we get to the end of that exercise, we'll have enough information for you to make a decision whether to proceed, and for us to be able to draw up an MOU.
So, so are you saying, so this is, the, the two things. If the, if we, just for the library, do we have any say in what we want? Or that's, we have no say? Like, suppose, like, coming back to what Liz was saying, we want a small room for the kids, I would, I would love. So do we even have a say in how the library should be built? Or that's some completely separate, that you guys pretty much, that's your architecture?
I have a way of answering that, but you can answer that, too.
We operate the library based on the type. So if you go to a large community library that's under construction now, say at Lees, or Middle Creek, and compare that to the program of service that's being offered at Leesville, it'll be the exact same service.
So there's nothing, no room, no wiggle room for anything that we would...
The wiggle room would come with dollars, and it would not just be construction dollars if it, if it's, if there's an operating impact there that would require more, more staff to manage, then, then that would have to be...
Not manage, I'm looking more for like, at this, like just activity room, like just space.
We can build an activity room, but we may not have the staff or the programs to put in it.
But that's much better than having at least a room we have. That's what...
But then it becomes, who is going to staff and use the room? And who is going to be responsible for scheduling that room? And is there a, a, the expectations that the library is going to manage that on behalf of the town? And if the answer is, if, if we're heading in that direction, then we would need to figure out on our end, what is the cost associated with that? And we can do that if the town commits to funding that portion of the operations. From our viewpoint, it is equitable for us to provide the same level of service regardless of the municipality. And so when, when you're talking about adding additional services to what we typically provide in a large community library, it puts us at an imbalance in other portions, parts of the county. And so, where we also have large community or, or community libraries. And so that's where we're coming from on this.
All right. Can I ask a quick question? Large community libraries, do they have Sunday hours?
I...
No.
So that's an important consideration.
Well, you would know that better than I would.
Yeah, this is...
I think communities don't.
Let me check on that. I'll, I'll let you know before I leave today.
Okay, thank you.
Is that just a summer thing?
He'll know soon.
All right, so let me get back to the schedule and kind of walk you through the steps, the way we see it. So we would need to know by December, if we have the site, that we can then start doing schematic design around, and whether or not we will have completed that facilitated use exercise, to get an understanding from the town, what it is you would like to see programmed into the building. And then, once we have that information, we'll incorporate that into an MOU. We'll then move into schematic design, and that's where we really start deciding whether or not it's two portions of the building side by side, on top of one another, and we'll get some sense pretty quickly about what the, the design will look like. Once there is a schematic design, that typically goes back to, in our case, the Wake County Board of Commissioners, and they approve schematic design before we start moving into final design. For Morrisville, if you partner with us on this facility, then we'll bring that schematic design back to the town for you to review, provide feedback on before we move into final So, right now, we think schematic design will go from January to March of 2017. Afterwards, the next nine months will be final design on the building. That nine months is, I would say, longer than what we typically do.
Yeah, that schematic design, that schematic design point might get a little longer. It just depends on, you know, how involved it is.
Yeah, so those two, they'll, the, the transition may float a little bit.
Yeah. But I think that the point that we're trying to hit is, is bidding it in the, in the winter of 2018.
So, during the time we're after schematic design and we're going through final design, we'll be working staff between the county and Morrisville will be working on developing the framework of an ILA. So once we get through design, and we go through the bid, we get the final numbers, we'll then be able to plug that into an ILA, and that will come back to both boards for consideration and approval. After the bid phase, we'll do the groundbreaking and start construction. And as we're constructing that, we'll enter into those discussions on joint use agreement, where we talk about who's going to maintain what portions of the building. Again, try to work it out to where there's no checks, trading hands, and we'll get that in place before the library opens. If we're able to stick with this schedule, Morrisville could see a new library in the spring of 2019. All right?
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Speed that process up.
This is very exciting.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Can I ask a question about this, the two-story? Because you do have Cameron Village, which, which is a multi-story library. Is there, I mean, you, you explained pretty clearly why you, you like it on one level, but...
Sure. Once you get up to a regional library, you're going from about 8,500 square feet to about 20,000 square feet, and we have to place staff throughout the building. So it's not as problematic once you get to a regional size, because we're going to have staff at different...
A lot of staff, yeah.
Where it does become problematic for us is that, once you go to two stories, is that the costs go up. And so, it could potentially go up. So because you're adding the elevator, you typically have to have a lobby space. I shouldn't say it's a problem, but it's, it's a concern. And not only do you have to have a people elevator, you have to have a service elevator in the space, and, and that, that's, we're not completely opposed to a two-story library if it's based on the site and it's a type that, where we're, it's not going to add additional operating costs.
And just to clarify, was 400 if you're on one level, 450 square foot potentially if we went...
That is a, that is a ballpark...
Clear, that's clear, but, okay.
And we will, if, once we start moving through this process, we'll be able to get a better number and come back to what the actual costs are going to be.
All right, so it sounds like, Martha, we need to schedule some time with the council to go over our thoughts on options.
Before a facilitated discussion?
Yes, yes.
And what was the cost of Holly Springs at that time when you did, when you came up at 3.5? The current cost is 450, was it 250 at that time, or?
I don't remember the square footage cost. I think the, let's see. I think the, I think the cost was 2.0, I think it was 2.4 million. I just, I can't remember exactly. Between 2.4 and 2.6 million, and that was, but, that was hard to divide out. I mean, I'd had to get some specific numbers, because we had shared space, but...
And 10,000?
Typically, what we, typically, the way we think about this, is we think about construction being just the building, not, not the site, because the site has all kinds of variables. The building, you can be, you can pretty much go apples to apples. At one time, the building was $300 a square foot. And we're in a different environment now, and I would say that the building is probably at least 350 a square foot now. And for, you know, for a smaller building, that tends to go up. For a, a regional library, that's going to be less, because you have, you have it spread out, economy of scale.
Anything else, Jason? You have a, one more slide to show us?
Discussion.
That's discussion.
Just want to make, make sure I didn't cut you off, so, um, any...
I, I will say that large community libraries are closed on Sunday.
Nine to nine during the week, and 10 to 6 on Fridays and Saturdays.
Yes.
I just want to be clear that we're calling it a library, but if it's a second floor that is our part, that's not really the library. That's our part of the building, right? And, because I don't think we're going to ask you to have your library on two floors. I think your library operation is on one floor, and we occupy the second.
That is correct.
Potentially.
Okay, potentially.
Depending upon the uses that you see.
Right, and I'd, I'm...
Bowling, bowling alleys and...
And pools.
Okay.
And I, I would think that, since we're so space constrained in the town center, that we'd be thinking pretty strongly about going two floors.
Well, we have...
We'll see.
That's another day. We'll, we'll, we'll get, where's that? Jason, Mark, thank you so much for your time tonight. We're, we're absolutely thrilled that we're getting to this part of the discussion. And thank everyone back at Wake County for all they do for us. We do appreciate it.
We, we look forward to it, too, and we always, libraries are fun projects, and so we like to do that, and we like to enhance the community however we can.
Absolutely. I'd like to go ahead and take a 10-minute recess here, and then we'll get back into the rest of the agenda, if that's okay with everybody?
Sounds great.
All right. Thank you all, see you in 10 minutes. Thanks.
Can we have your contact?
All right, let's go ahead and call the meeting back to order. It's now 7:54. Just to, before we go to the next topic, which would be the McCrimmon Parkway, I know early on in this evening, we talked about the, sort of the play between the farmer's market and what we just talked about, the library. Was there additional follow-up question or comments or anything?
I, I think that the two are more independent than I thought, but I am sensing that the library could have more costs than we had anticipated, so I just want to keep the farmer's market more conservative. That was just my thought.
Okay. All right.
Yes.
Thank you very much. So let me go ahead and turn it over to the town manager for the update on the McCrimmon Parkway extension.
Thank you, Mayor. And tomorrow night's agenda, we have the McCrimmon Parkway Construction Bid Award. And I, I mentioned to town council that the item, as it's going to be presented to you tomorrow by Blake, is not going to be a recommendation for an award of a contract yet. I, I will say once, I will say twice, I will say three times. I don't have all the answers tonight. I just want to give you some of the information about what we're doing behind the scenes and what's sort of going on, is we did get five bids, and we've provided in that item the range of those bids from about 5.2 to 6.5, and indicated that they were above our estimate for that phase of the project. And, and just a reminder that, you know, that's always the case, as Blake's talked to you, those project cost estimates sort of get refined the further you get in design, but they are still an estimate till we go out to bid. You even heard the library people say that tonight. So roughly $1 million, the lowest bid to what our estimate was. And so, I think after we picked ourselves up, off the floor, we really wanted to verify that there wasn't anything incorrectly calculated mathematically in those bids. So our consultant has done that. That step is complete, and there was very little change in any of those bids. What we are attempting to do is recognize that we have a certain amount of money for the entire project, and so what we're trying to do is, is take those costs associated with the first phase and just sort of look into the future for what might happen for Phase Two. That's, again, an inexact science, because we don't have a final design for Phase Two. We're also talking several years in the future, and so those are things we take into account. We then looked at all of the bids themselves to sort of determine where the costs were different, and gathered some information from some of the contractors about what might have influenced their bids. So, there was some unit price fluctuations. We've also heard some things like recessionary pricing is not in effect anymore. Private contractor work is plentiful, so the desire for some additional work may have influenced the competitiveness of the bids. The other person we really wanted to talk to was NC DOT, because they're a partner in the project, but they also have much more current information that we can work on to determine what we might be expecting for that future phase. So, so we're trying to gather all that information, so that we're not awarding a contract for a part of a project, only to present you with a problem in the future. So we're really just being very cautious, careful, deliberate, before we bring forward that recommendation, and, and really determine what the potential difference might be. Again, recognizing, we're estimating future costs. We don't know what they were. We have to go out to bid in the future on Phase Two. And then, if we don't think that that's a manageable, what options you might consider to do that. And we're also making sure that we're recognizing that we're on our pathway to issuing bonds already. So that's really the background of what staff is working on right now. Again, I don't have a lot of the real answers to that, other than we're still doing those processes.
And what is the timing on getting us additional information?
We are hoping to hear back with some additional information by tomorrow from NC DOT, but I don't know when that will occur, and, and don't know that we'll be able to have done anything to evaluate that prior to the meeting tomorrow. So my, my most optimistic goal at this point would be to be able to make some kind of recommendation to you by the August 23 meeting. At that point, I also want to just be able to tell you what timeline issues there might be, which I, we, we don't know that yet. We're, we're set to issue bonds September 13th. I, I really have to find out about flexibility there, but, but just really have to have that information, or whether we might be asking you to award on August 23rd. I just don't know that answer yet.
Is Blake going to speak tonight?
No.
We don't get to hear him until tomorrow? Hi, Blake. All right, questions? Michael?
Two questions. What was your original estimate?
The project cost estimate for this portion of the project was 4.2.
And I imagine you're looking at leaping? Is that a good possibility?
That is one of the options that we might consider.
Okay, and the timeline on that, what does that do to our...
That's what I have to verify. I, I can't tell you that is a viable option at this point. I don't know that answer.
And you could come back and say, let's just give it to the lowest bid at this point, too.
I probably wouldn't do that without some options for you to consider if you were not comfortable with that, or we can't recognize some reasonable comfort with what Phase Two would be. That could also be an option. You go ahead with Phase One and consider something different with Phase Two. And we are looking at options in both parts of the project, Phase One and Phase Two.
Thank you. Okay. Any additional questions for...
Just to verify, Martha, you said you're, you have not talked to DOT yet?
We talked to them preliminarily today. They gave us some insight about what they're experiencing with their contracts themselves, what they are also redoing, or not redoing, they're, I'll say, validating what our engineer estimate was, to make sure it's really only the unit prices, not anything else. That'll just help us evaluate what could happen if we chose to rebid versus accept or make some kind of modifications.
And does DOT, do they handle the bid process for Phase Two, or is that also, do we do that?
We would handle the bid process, well, I'm sorry. Blake, I am going to ask you, who will handle the bid process for Phase Two?
Engineer.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Satish?
So, the lowest bid came a mil up, right?
Mm-hmm.
And what was the highest?
About 6.5.
So you can say 2.3 up?
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
And so, pretty much at this time, rebidding is not an option on the table.
She did not say...
All options are on the table.
So the timeline for rebidding, I remember, like, when I was sitting, like, we did something similar for the Church Street Park, like, there were some technical issues or something. There was some rebidding and they quickly came back, so...
Yeah, we've got some notification requirements that are required. One of the options we're also evaluating is, is we could redefine the scope of Phase One, which is also an option we're considering that we could bring back to you. I might suggest the only option I won't bring back is don't do the project. That's the only, that's the only option you will not see.
Not an option.
Martha, how are we on the right-of-way piece of this? I assume that's totally separate from this discussion.
It is, but I think Phase One right-of-way, I would say, is substantially complete. I don't think, we don't have everything signed on the dotted line. I think there's one that has indicated yes, but I don't know that we've actually obtained the signatures. Can Blake verify that's correct?
Yeah, there's a little property that's for the utility locations that we have an agreement protocol, just about our attorney, Kate's attorney, and finalizing, just signing bottom line, we agree on price and try to get the owner to sign it. That should be within the next couple days.
I knew Frank was going to be in this discussion.
I don't ask Frank to 8:30 Monday morning meetings often, but he was with us this morning, so...
Any other questions for the town manager? Okay.
No questions. I mean, just a comment that, I mean, we've gone through this over the years. Anytime we do bids, costs were always estimates. I mean, they're never going to come back exactly where we want, so I think we're just going to have to be patient and just hope that they're as close to what we expect.
But what can we do, Martha, to come closer to this swing of 1 to 2.3?
Well, that in and of itself, for this project, we were told was not unusual. That's influenced by whether they really want the work, how much profit they're trying to put in, you know, just sort of second guessing each... That in and of itself is not a wide range of bids. The two bids, the first and the second, were within a couple hundred thousand dollars of each other, which, again, is not a significant amount on this type of project. Related to the project cost estimates and the bids, I think you've heard it from us repeatedly, the project cost estimates continue to get refined the further you go in design, but you really don't have a barometer till you've bid the project. And that's really what we're trying to re-verify now.
My biggest worry is, like, my biggest worry here is not this in particular, with all the projects coming behind, is when our estimates get blown, then our planning gets really off and every $500,000 squeeze is a squeeze on our budget and planning. And that's where a mil here is, how can we cut it down? Like, we have AMAFC coming, we have the sidewalks and all kinds of things, a park walkways coming in. That's my biggest concern is, what can we do to have a better estimate?
Point well taken, and we're always trying to address that, but, and I don't want this to sound like we're making excuses, but you even heard Wake County just say it, and that's what DOT told us today. I mean, they are rejecting bids, and they do this every day, all day, and they reject... They have things coming in 30 and 40% higher than their own cost estimates.
And by talking to DOT tomorrow, what are we trying to achieve? Like, are they going to tell, oh, no, the bids are very high, just to get you better estimates?
What they're providing for us is sort of a recheck of what our cost estimate for the project was so that we could compare it to what we actually got. If they tell us, yes, your project estimate was reasonable, it just gives us some more information to consider about whether we should be considering rejecting bids or accepting these bids or modifying the scope. Those are some of the options open.
All right. Any additional questions from the town manager? All right, thank you very much, Martha, for that update. Next up is the Marshall Carpenter Road Concept Design. Rich?
You're going to need to... While they're on the subject of spending money...
You have some good news for us?
Yeah.
Well, potentially, a little bit. So first of all, the A.D.'s kind of underscored the need to get the decisions on these outstanding items. Essentially, tomorrow Benjamin will be briefing the first of the lapse and middle discussions and for us to be able to give you a good recommendation onto what that level of funding would need, all these decisions kind of play into that from the consultant's standpoint and being able to give us a better estimate of those numbers. So the quicker we can get to these decisions, the better information we can have as we move through that process as well. So basically tonight, there's kind of three things, three big decisions that we'd like to try to nail down if possible. The first one is the cross-section. The second one was that intersection number nine, the Marshall Square intersection, how to handle that, as well as the third one being the South Church Street connectivity, that either Franklin-Up Church Extension or South Page. So if everybody's all right, jumping right into it. I guess the decision number one from the cross-section standpoint. Option number one, that's the median divided section. You all had asked us to go back to DOT and ask for considerations regarding us getting your median to be able to obtain 13-foot outside lanes, 11-foot inside lanes. We can do that. The collateral damage there being we cannot get, or excuse me, two of the intersections that we had discussed originally, being potential to have leftovers, would actually have to be right-in, right-out. Those were Wranglin and Cudre Lane. Essentially, we would still maintain a full-access movement intersection at all the other major intersections, but those two would have right-in, right-out. Do you want to note those neighborhoods do have interconnectivity internal to their developments so they could still get to the full access, just those individual roads would be right-in, right-out? With that option, here's a little bit of the good news. The way the model looks right now from a noise study, under the median divided section, there would be no requirement for noise walls. Essentially, the model has come back. The south side of the road, there would only be two, I think, two residences in the Carpenter Park area that may be benefited or may exceed the 67-decibel range. However, due to all the utility conflicts, the overhead lines, the water line, et cetera, on that side of the road, it would not meet the reasonability or constructibility portion of that kind of analysis, so no wall would be required on that south side. The other side of the road, there is one, I believe, one residence that actually, and actually, it's, the standard is exceeds or approaches 67 decibels. There was one residence that was at 65.6, which rounds up to 66, which is approaching 67. However, the DOT is looking at redoing their policy, subject to federal approval this fall, probably September, October time period, where if the wall would not benefit at least two receptors, then there is no need for the wall. Since there is only one receptor on that north side of the road, that would be affected anyway, we would not meet the minimum of two criteria, therefore, no wall would be required as well. Again, that is the model run as a median divided section. That's option number one that we were talking about. Option two...
Before you make the study, you won't have to say, you won't have to do a study, you choose that, or is it...
That is the study, essentially. So basically, what they could do is the model run, they could put that in a report format and submit that to the state and federal environmental folks to concur with it, which essentially would mean we ran the model, here's the only three total residences that are affected, here's why a noise wall won't benefit them or is not required, and then it would just be concurrence from their end. Again, that's subject to a policy that should be approved later this year. Timing of that doesn't really affect our overall project. We can wait until the fall or winter to have them go ahead and sign off on our application, or excuse me, on our submittal for the categorical exclusions document, but again, there are some, yeah.
So where's the one house?
I believe it's the, if you're facing Old Savannah, I believe it's the first, that first house on the right.
Yeah. I mean, it's unusual to me that there's only one house, because they're all very, very close to the road, that it wouldn't be more than one house. In the initial study, about, you know, four years ago, there were several houses along the road that were sensitized to that decibel level.
This is all based on the most recent data that was taken, so the model's been calibrated based on the background noise that was taken back in January, February timeframe, as well as just the model parameters that are required at this point. So they're still diving into it, or they're still checking everything, double, triple-checking everything, but the call that I got today was that they feel pretty confident that, based on the current model analysis, it wouldn't be required.
I don't know. I just think all four houses on the Savannah and Orianna are very exposed, that they would be potential receptors, so that would be adversely affected. So if you could provide that study to the council, that would be very helpful.
Well, and that's one of the things, based on, well, based on this decision, that'll be kind of the next, you know, they can move forward with finalizing that. Because option number two with the five-lane section, so under that, so again, with option one, we would be able to maintain most of the characteristics of the cross-section that we are anticipating. It is a bit of a safer movement. It does reduce some of the accidents, but we are constraining those two additional entrances. Option two is the five-lane section. Under this scenario, really, the predominant construction activity from Davis back to Old Savannah Drive would essentially be milling the existing asphalt and restriping it. Under this scenario, all the existing roadway connections would maintain their full access as they currently do today. There would be the center turn lane, as well as 13-foot outside lanes and 11-foot inside lanes. There would be some cost savings realized between option two versus option one. Proximate costs, again, estimates, very high-level planning kind of estimates. The cost differential for installing the median versus not installing the median is probably in the $250,000 to $300,000 range, just depending upon construction cost and the final design of things like drainage and grading and all that type of stuff.
What was required for option two?
Well, that's a, the only thing with option two is the model would have to be redone, recalibrated. So under the current model, my understanding is it's the ones that are not receptors are all off by, say, tenths of a decibel. How a five-lane section versus a median section affects that model is something that they wouldn't know until they, until they run the model essentially, which they're not going to do unless we tell them option number two is what we're thinking is the preferred option at this point, so...
Back to option one, you said there are two streets that would be right-in, right-out only. Cudre, we know, could double back and go out, mill it if they need to get to Davis. But the other one, I think, wasn't there...
Bergman, I believe.
That, no way out for those folks?
Orianna is the no way out, as well as the Groves.
So it's not Bergman that you're talking about?
The, yeah, Bergman would connect back to, I don't have the map.
The Groves is the one that has no way out.
Groves is...
And is that Bergman, or...
No, that is not Bergman. Berg, the Groves would...
Baglin, or...
Wranglin is, Misty Grove Circle.
Right.
That is, that is the Groves. That, under either scenario, would always be right-in, right-out only, but...
Both scenarios?
Under both scenarios, that's correct.
That's the hard part.
And we asked for a leftover consideration in that point, but the separation between the other intersections can't be allowed.
Okay, so there will be some right-in, right-out only required with this? Just that one?
Just that one.
Okay.
For both options. There will be a median...
Either way, that's going to happen.
...back to Town Hall Drive under both scenarios.
And then option one would additionally have two additional right-in, right-out only, but both of them have a way out?
Correct.
Besides...
But it would intensify that way out because it's all the same community.
Yeah, but what's the cost of, if we had supposed to be having option two, the study comes back, you want to put a wall? Just as an assumption. So the cost of the wall, what would that be?
Yeah, I mean, the cost of the wall is significant. I mean, at that point, we'd have to see what areas are required and how much right-of-way, design, construction, all that. There is still the waiver opportunity, which would be, again, if the new policy is approved later this year, I believe at least 50% of the benefited receptors would have to say they want the wall. Currently, at least 50% of them have to say they do not want the wall, so it's a little easier to get people to say they don't want it, I guess.
It's out dimmer versus out doubt.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So there is that. Again, you know, because we're talking about tents...
I'm looking at the worst scenario, like, say, they said they want the wall. Okay, so I'm kind of trying to weigh out. You said the median cost is $250,000 to $300,000 on option one over option two. So if they say, like, an option two, which is good, but the walls come on...
They'd be significantly more than the 250,000.
No, no, like, yes.
They'd be significantly more than the 250,000.
Is it in the $100,000, or is it like way, or...
Yeah.
I would caution the consideration about the wall cost until we have the study. I really think this is not just an economic choice, this is a quality of life choice for these people that are going to have right-in, right-out on this road. It's going to be a, they're not going to know that we saved $200,000. You know what I mean, is, let's be careful here.
All right.
What's the timeline on the construction? How much more to take the medians in first?
Right now, it's kind of the estimate, talked with the consultant. It could save between 30 and 60 days of construction to not have to install those medians. You also wouldn't have work being done within the center of the road and having to shift traffic back and forth potentially, as well as, you know, under scenario, or option number two, a lot of that paving and striping could potentially be done at night to be able to avoid daytime to...
I'd say that we'd be all in agreement. I'm personally, like, option two, but if they say the wall's up, then...
But I've been through this routine. I lived in the wall scenario four years ago. I have studied the rules, I understand it, I have talked to the neighbors, you know, let's just get the environmental study and then cross that bridge. They will be $1 million if they're mandated, okay?
Do the neighbors want the walls or not?
There's a couple neighbors that want the walls, and most of them don't because it's so high and it would cause a lot of lack of sunlight and other things, so...
Yeah, that is one thing to note. The receptors, I can't remember exactly which ones, but some of them were second-story affected, so that means automatically you're up in that 20-to-22-foot tall wall range, which was, I think, the original study that was done.
Just not sustainable.
So, yeah, that's a consideration.
What would it take if, you know, we really don't know if option two is more or less expensive than option one at this point. We simply don't know. If the walls are part of it, then I think everyone would probably go to one. I don't want to make that assumption, but it sounds...
Or we would pursue other options.
So what would it take to get the noise study done on option two so we know where we are with that? Because I feel like I'm being asked to make a decision on something I just don't have the information on.
Yeah, and that's, I asked them that today. Obviously, there could be some additional cost involved, but I believe that they could get it probably turned around to us in about a week. Again, we'd have to fit into their schedule. That was something that the person I was speaking with, I don't want to comment exactly on what they would charge, that was something I asked them to go back and discuss and see what that is.
How much did it charge the fuss study?
It's included in the overall contract price.
Yeah, we don't know.
So if I could recommend or at least put it out there for discussion, is the council okay with figuring out if option two needs walls or not, and then we'll make a decision at that point?
Determining the environmental impact of not having median? Is that the question?
Yeah, I mean, I like to, I like to give everyone as much access as possible, which would be option two, but if it comes with walls, I want option one.
Well, we should know now. Well, we should know now versus later, right? So we should invest...
Well, that's what, that's what I'm saying. Let's, let's ask, ask...
I think we also ask those neighbors. They would probably know.
Those are, TJ, questions or comments, concerns?
Well, I guess my only comment is, you know, I, I absolutely want to make sure that people have as much access as possible, but I also am concerned about safety. And I think we talked a little bit about the fact that the median actually is a safer option. And, and I got to tell you, I was hit once. The one and only time I've ever been in an accident was because of option number two. And I, there, that middle lane is called a suicide lane for a reason. And I, I just, it just concerns me deeply that that is not a safer option, number two. I, I get it that it gives people more options as far as access and you get more lefts, but that comes at a safety cost, and so that concerns me deeply.
I mean, one of the discussion points I was thinking with option two, and I'm going to bring this up until you get really tired of me, but some sort of traffic control stoplight, because as we add more capacity to this road, we need a control point to make it safer for people to get out of that north side of the road. That is the only access point for four communities, and how else can they get out if, you know, it's only a Mooresville Carpenter. It's a bad design for our road network, and we're just adding to the strain of it by cutting off access left and right, unless we have a stoplight. And I was just watching the construction of the new apartments along fifty-four by Weston. They, they built this beautiful new stoplight. How did they get away with that? Is that a town thing? Is that an NCDOT thing? So if they can do it, why can't we? You know?
The, the traffic generation from a development of that size with the commercial aspect and all that is going to be significantly more than what our data is currently showing our, the turning demands coming from the neighborhoods of the north or on the north side of the road. We, we've asked the DOT in multiple different ways. We've offered to pay for it entirely, short of offering, one of my children, I don't know that there's any other thing we can do, I guess, at this point without the data saying something differently.
So, so the data for the north side might be every neighborhood has to get out onto Mooresville Carpenter Road, but on the south side, there's a lot of network, and there's a way to get all the way to Davis, back, 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 all the way to the carry portion of that. I mean, have you counted all those houses as being able to access onto Mooresville Carpenter? I mean, maybe you look at the bigger network there as a capacity.
The, the traffic engineers, my understanding is, have looked at it in every scenario, including stacking up, assuming if you blocked these two entrances, or two of the exits, excuse me, restricted two of the intersections and funneled everybody even to the one, the numbers just still don't, don't justify. Again, typically DOT wants to meet three warrants, we're not even meeting one. And so even under any of those scenarios with the growth and projections and all that...
So I'll, I'll do my last plea. There was a child that died at the intersection of, is it Greta and, you know? Which is where we requested the traffic signal on the initial request. I would think that that would at least get a point. You know, we don't want to have any more points, but I'm going to keep bringing this up. I just warn you of that. It's just somehow we need to think about the safety, and we don't want to have more issues and more accidents and more loss of life, so.
To Liz's point.
So I should say to add to that, like, the bus stops to keep in mind, if there's a median, they don't have the children across the road all the way. If the median is one of the drivers of bus stops, which gets to the point of improved pedestrian and its overall safety as well. So I know in that instance, you know, the kid was crossing. In this case, we're not giving them any lanes from here across, if you have the lanes involved without a stop, you know, heading in one direction, they won't trouble you.
That's, that's the case on Mooresville Parkway. On Mooresville Parkway, you can't get off on one side of the street and walk to the other, they won't let you do that. That's right.
It has to do with the bus stop policy and the traffic laws and...
That's right.
All right, so...
But I'm in favor of option two, moving forward with that, with the assumption that we'll go through with it, so. And next time, maybe if we're getting a free study, let's wait to do the study until we choose an option, I guess, because we already used up our free study this time.
Just a couple of minutes as y'all are talking about option one versus option two. One, option one essentially is our transportation plan, cross section, or really close to it, it's, you know, varies a little bit. Option two, we'd have to go through and amend our transportation plan again. Again, not a big issue, but we've already done it once, we'd have to go through and do it again. The other thing to think about when it comes to how we are open to fund this project for construction, which is lab funding, is that part of the scoring with lab funding is looking at safety, and it's, they look at what they call a crash reduction factor toolbox, and one of those crash reduction factors is a median. So the way with the five lane section may, may change our lab scoring. I'm not saying it would make this project not score well in lab, but it does affect our lab scoring overall when you start reducing some, when you start taking away the median and some of these other safety features that we try to build in. So that's just a couple other things to think about. Like I said, not necessarily heat issues and not necessarily anything that would keep us from getting funded, but they will affect the scoring of our project in lab.
And one other consideration, at the existing intersections where there's the pedestrian crosswalks with the signal, this, the rapid reflecting, RFBs, we'll go with that. We would have to look at, I guess, essentially under both scenarios, how we would be able to reinstall that in a safe manner, once we get four lanes of traffic and everything, and whether or not we can have pedestrian refuge or not.
Like, I value, you know, what Benjamin is saying, but we have Davis Drive and McRummond Intersection, Davis Drive and Marshall Carpenter, the amount of accidents that are happening are more deadly. We have seen over a period of time, they're like, they're like T-boning, and Todd, you can run reports and they're on, and, and yes, we may go down, and in fact, if this is coming down, it all comes down to dollars. If this is saving two fifty to three hundred thousand dollars, and that equates down to your next argument that would come down to lab funding, if we add more, that's almost half the money if we had to increase it. If, if we want to increase it to thirty, then that's eight hundred thousand, this is almost half the money there.
Yeah.
So it's all, it's, it's how you press, you know, how you put all that thing in perspective, it's all...
Exactly, but I did just want to point that out, and then the other note too, is on the median issue, is that, you know, we do need to move quickly on this, because if council were to choose option two with five lane section, I'm not certain we could apply for lab funding this year. I'd have to look at the rules again, but one of the things we have to show is that it complies with our transportation plan. Obviously, option two may not. I, I've got a look into that a little bit further, but I did, it just came, because we were talking about it. That's one thing I had wanted to double check. I don't, I think it probably, it would be okay, but that is something we would also need to be aware of. And two, the fact that we are currently on the briefing schedule, we'll be asking for a decision on the lab funding at the end of August.
I guess what I learned tonight with this was the fact, I thought between one and two would decide if people are going to be isolated in the neighborhoods as far as right in, right out only. It sounds like that's not the case, that the two intersections that would have it, in addition to the one that has to have it, still have options. So I think I'd still like to, you know, give option two the ability to do the noise, I mean, to have that study done. If it's taken a week, get it done, so we at least have that information, we're not guessing.
And also, and also from what Benjamin's saying, which was very important, is if you need to amend our transportation plan, let's start that right now, because let's not waste any cycles to update that just precautionary, because we are losing time, and the fact is saying we cannot apply for lab funding this year, which means we'll lose the cycle to get anything for February, right, Benjamin?
Yeah, yes, if we weren't able to, if for some reason we weren't able to check that box and say comply, we wouldn't be able to submit.
Yeah, sure, so I think it's important to start, you know, amending that.
So this is something we should have? Would we have to replace the current cross section, or can we have two cross sections? Two options? Okay, so it'd be just adding one and not losing anything. I think we'd probably be okay with that, because of options going forward, maybe.
But that also adds it for everything, you know, so, right?
What's that?
If we had that option out there, it adds it for everything, so all this...
Specific to this road, so the transportation plan would be amended so that from between Davis and...
Just for this one road?
Right, the way it's broken out in the transportation plan, we have two cross sections, one from Davis to Old Savannah, one from Old Savannah to Town Hall Drive, essentially.
Apply to other roads in town, developers wouldn't have a choice between these two.
Okay. What's next, Rich?
The next one, option, or decision number two, that was that Mooresville Square, the current connection, under the current scenario, it's too close. What we had discussed potentially with the property owners was if they were willing to dedicate all the right of way required for both the frontage, as well as the spur road, we could potentially include the construction of that as part of the lab project. Benjamin did speak with the Campo folks, and a connection of a shorter nature here could certainly, well, they felt as though the case could certainly be made, that it was mitigation and could be included as part of the overall project. Option number two is what the one property owner with the vacant land had requested, which was taking that, what would have been about a two hundred and fifty foot extension, and making it approximately six hundred foot long to extend to the rear of the property. That one would obviously add significant cost, not only from a construction standpoint, as well as potentially environmental approval, but also the likelihood of being able to include something like that as part of that lap submittal would likely be, not be able to be justified. The third option, excuse me, the third option that we had discussed last time was potentially building the actual intersection and just stubbing out to the properties as shown. That would leave the Mooresville Square property with essentially a right in, right out only until such time as the property to the south developed and, per our planning and zoning ordinance, per the UDO, they would have to offer cross access to the neighboring property, so that would be potentially obtained at that point. So those are kind of the three options that we have in front of us. Just want to see if we can get the consensus on which one.
Could option one be a hundred feet instead of two fifty? Why does it have to be two fifty?
So...
There's an existing parcel here at the corner and existing roadway that stubs out to the neighboring property, so our, our...
But it could be, if we decided it to, because we could decide on three.
That is, I mean, the one, the one issue, it could be a hundred foot probably at an absolute minimum, just to allow for queuing to get back out onto the road. It would, it would put the entrance to the existing developed property somewhere within this existing out parcel, so that, that could be...
Well, again, I just worry about policy, because parcel across the street, couldn't they come across and say, build a lesser road?
Not under the current...
Under, one of the things that we, especially in making a discussion with Campo and DOT as well, one of the things that they take into consideration is whether it's a developed property or undeveloped property, as well as whether it's residential or non-residential. So a scenario like this where we have an existing non, or commercial property operating, being able to provide them as much access in a safe manner as possible, they would certainly be open to including that.
Put the land in the city, it's not even there, right?
That is, that is correct. The, the land would predominantly be on the neighboring property owner, but again, that was where the conversation with the property owner, if, we would be able to memorialize a full access movement at their frontage under this scenario and provide them access, greater access capabilities.
Fifty percent of a hundred feet versus two hundred, and say, build it out, you're building the remainder out yourself.
Yes.
So I asked...
What's the difference, Michael, in doing that and just option three then?
Yeah, really?
You're like teasing them, you're going to get, you're going to get a hundred feet into the property and say, I mean, what, what's the, what's the point at that?
It's a policy issue, I don't want to...
What's the policy? What's the policy?
What's the policy? Are you doing them a favor or not? Why are you, why are you building six hundred feet like they want to?
Well, I think, I think that could be, you could argue that that's doing them a favor, building six hundred, but to give them access to their current, you know, parking area is not doing them a favor, it's simply...
It's not even their land.
That's an agreement they had with the next door neighbors. Who, who really cares whose land it is?
Yeah, that's...
I mean, what does it matter?
Because then we're, then it's perceived favor, you're giving, they're not even their land, or don't build the road, not even on their property, if they're giving up the road on their property.
I, I think you'd say the vacant lot is probably seeing this as a good thing, not a bad thing, so that's probably the one happy to give up the land, because it, you know, it, it helps them as well. So I don't, I don't think, you know, I think we just have to decide, are we willing to stub the land, stub it, and, and, and get a retail business and tell Dan Zamba, right in, right out only, sorry, you build your own? Or we do the two fifty to his parking lot, or we do the six fifty, which I will say, I'm not in favor of option two, being a two and rich, but...
I, I do just want to note also, we refer to it as Mooresville Square, but there are actually three or four different parcel owners in there now. There's the school in the back, or excuse me, the daycare in the back. There's a new school that's actually under construction right now, as well as one of the other out parcels at the rear of the shopping center building. We've been told is recently sold to another...
For that, for that... And, and the question I have is, in the morning also, I was asking, so there is a vacant parcel, right? And option two, you see like the green space there?
This one here?
Yeah, yes. So, so they are not, so Dan is not giving any piece of his property, so basically it's all coming in the ready's property, though, if you look at option one, that tar strip is on the, the thing. So I was under the assumption that it is cutting half and half onto, like, their half of the road and this half of the road, that's not it, it's, it's all on this side.
No, and what that's driven by, unfortunately, and, and actually Dan Zamba, who's the current owner of that open, open out parcel, he has said that he would be willing to, to work with us and something like that. The issue that we have here is where the intersection needs to be, being that the absolute minimum that DOT would accept is eight hundred feet, is essentially where we've shown it. So this road basically has to be in the location it is.
Okay, fine, then that's okay. Then another question is, when you take out, like, take a right there, you know, then you require an access right, like a tunneling, do you have that? That core on option one?
Would there be a right turn lane into this site?
No, no, on the right there, on option one.
Oh, excuse me, here?
Yeah, right, you're coming inside, so what about going outside the other side? Yeah, that side.
There would not, it would just be the, the two lanes of traffic, so the additional lane that we're going to install as part of the overall project. There wouldn't be any acceleration or deceleration lanes at any of these intersections. All those movements can be made from the outside travelway.
I don't see this a whole lot different from what we're talking about next, which is, you know, the Page Street, south side, and isolating, you know, four, four or five residents there, and we're, we're going to have the same discussion in ten minutes on, on that, so.
I guess one consideration with this too, again, under option number one, what we had mentioned to, or talked to the property owner, would be them dedicating the land in exchange for us, including this, as part of our construction, permitting and construction. If it seems like the council kind of wants to lean towards option one, as before those discussions with the property owner, if we have to let them know that option two, the extension, is not an option, should they not be as willing to, to dedicate that land, how would you want to proceed as well? Would we want to then default to option number three? Which, again, we would bring that information back to you, I just...
I, I think it would be a pretty clear choice on their part if we said we're not going to do it, and they, they threatened to pull it, I mean, let, you know, then they might have to live with three if that's, I mean, I, I think, I think we're trying then they might have to live with three if that's, I mean, I, I think, I think we're trying to work with them, we're trying to give them access. I don't want to isolate a business park like this, I mean, that's just, to me, that's not an option as to, this is not an option for me. But why don't we go around and kind of say what's on your mind and see if there's any sort of agreement here?
Well, this one is really hard for me because I, I agree with you, Mark, we're gonna, the next op, the next discussion we're gonna have, we're talking about how we're gonna give some landowners options to get out, I think. And, and then the last discussion we just had, we talked about how a lot of neighborhoods are gonna have right-in, right-out only, and that's it. And that's what, what we're gonna have to live with, and that's what the residents are gonna have to live with.
It's two of them will, will have right-in, right-out, but they still can go and make left, you know, drive down the block and make left. So there's, there's one that gets isolated regardless of any option, right?
Well, there's.
Can I say that right?
Yes.
And then there's two more that have right-in, right-out only, but they still can go elsewhere to make their left-hand turn, which is not the case here, and it's not the case in the next one.
Morseville Parkway, a lot of people, Liz, as you know, who live on a right-in, right-out.
I live on a right-in, right-out, I turn a right every night, every day and have to do a U-turn.
There's roughly 2,000 people on that street that are gonna have it once things start to happen there with the Aquatic Center.
I guess the, here, here's, again, I struggle, I'm struggling with this one. Clearly, I don't like the option, option two, that's off, off the table for me. But the difference between this one and the next one we're gonna talk about is that at least here, if you're making a right-out, you have the option to go up at the light at Town Hall Drive and make a left and do a U-turn and come back around again. I'm not saying that's desirable, but that, that's an option. In the next topic, we're gonna talk about, those folks and all those properties, South Morseville Carpenter don't have that. They have, they, they have no way of doing a U-turn, quite frankly. Yeah, right, we're, you're sending them all the way down aviation, I mean, they can make a left on 54, but that doesn't help them. So, so that's, that's even more problematic.
And I, Liz, if I could just, I, I, I understand that piece of the argument, but I think there's also some value in, do we want to take retail business and, and make the tra, traffic go to that intersection, make a U-turn or whatever?
Totally agree, I'm not saying that's just.
Make a lucky turn, get out of there.
I, I said that's not desirable, but that, that is an option. That's why I said this one's not easy for me, quite frankly, and that's why I said option one is definitely off the table, I mean, option two is off the table. And quite frankly, option one would be off the table for me if they're not going to give the land for, for, I would, I would highly, highly recommend nobody do that. Then, then you absolutely go to option three.
But they are giving the land, right? I mean, they're talking about giving the right-of-way to the.
That, that was how, that was how we've discussed with them, again, they came back and asked about option number two being, you know, part of that deal. We've already informed them that that would be a very large stretch, but we had no, we would certainly bring it forward. So that, that would be what we, I think we would take the next step would be to memorialize that conversation or that agreement, in that they were willing to give up, dedicate the right-of-way.
Well, I agree with, let, let's negotiate with you. TJ, no, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And one other thing I did want to note, going back on that, the U-turn conversation, one thing that was brought to our attention by the property owners as well was the, the daycare that is there, if we did go with, say, option number three, that could potentially introduce a lot more kind of U-turns in that morning period, when people are actually trying to get there to drop their children off for that daycare. So, you know, U-turns in general obviously do add a little bit of extra funkiness to the, to the commute in the morning when you have people doing that. So that is one other consideration that they did want us to evaluate.
TJ, what are your thoughts?
Be curious about for option one, the actual cost of the right-of-way as compared to our construction costs for that. And I'd rather make it equitable and not just say, "We're gonna pay for the road." Sort of, we should pay for what we pay for and they can pay for the construction that they require, would be sort of my fairness. But then we do come to our next discussion where we're sort of, but that next one, we're sort of also improving our own land. Just to clarify, there isn't gonna be a traffic signal up there, it's just gonna be a left-in.
Yeah, right, right now, it would be standard, unsignalized, full-access intersection. Again, one other, when the property to the north that's undeveloped, as well as the property to the south develops, if they hit, if, if they hit the signal warrants to require at that point in time, which would be shown as part of our T I A that they would submit to us, they would be required to do that at that time.
That would be unlikely because they still have the right-in, right-out at the other side, at the next entrance. So they'd count that as another exit, so that probably reduced that traffic.
There's an opportunity there, but where this intersection would be likely, the property to the north, the Stottlemyre property that was recently rezoned, this would likely be that same connection for them as well.
Right.
So just depending on how that trip, trip distribution went, both from the north side as well as whatever.
On the light there, we need more cut-through traffic?
That's right.
It kind of works in that favor unfortunately. One thing with the, with the cost, that is something that we're looking at, we're actually talking to a company right now, trying to get a proposal to start looking at getting appraisals done, so we can start figuring out right-of-way costs from the money that you appropriated with the budget this past July. In ballpark numbers, based on the numbers we've seen, the approximate cost of the right-of-way could be approximately, or in the $100,000 range. To do the connection of about 250 feet, that cost could probably, could possibly be depending on how, what that entrance looks like. If it's right now, it's just a ditch kind of section entrance, and then as the other property develops, they would enhance that. More likely, we'd still want curb and gutter on it at least, but at a minimum, it would probably be about $150,000. That being said, that construction cost would be affected by the match for lap, if it's included as the lap. So depending on what your percentage of lap is, the actual dollar spent to affect that $150,000 could be comparable to what that, what that land cost would have been. Because the land cost would be 100% out of our pocket.
We're not getting a match on the right-of-way.
Correct.
So that has, you look at 100% of that, if we get a, you know, 20, 25% match on the build of the other piece, the, the 250, are you saying, what would that cost us?
That's, that's kind of the absolute minimum number would be $150,000.
It might, sounds like it could be a wash then, so, all right. Ms. Vicki?
I'll make it short and sweet, I think option one is probably preferred because it's simplest and it can be submitted for lap construction, and there is that potential to really reduce the amount of spend using right-of-way and so forth. Three is acceptable, and I'm not a fan of two, so.
So teach, Michael and Steve?
I think option one is more feasible because it's an existing business. It's hard to basically take an access, and especially, I like the funding equation, the land that they're giving equates to the dollar amounts for the funding. The kind of equates are the same amount, it was like dollar-to-dollar type equities are.
Michael?
Certainly not, three is, I think, legally what we're required to do, one I can work with. But again, I just caution everybody, the lap funding, you have to pay for cost overruns, and lap funding also has taxpayers paying for it, so. Just trying to be accountable to everybody, so, but if there is a, if we're asking for right-of-way and you get, you know, a comparable amount, that could be an agreement, that's why I thought of 100 feet versus 250.
Yeah, and we can certainly look at that, and that's where, kind of what that entrance looks like, again, if it's full curb gutter, how wide it is and all that, we can, we can kind of work with that.
As our neighbor, so if they contribute something, is, is a good neighbor, kind of what we work with development paying for stuff. I believe in the front of the set. Our, our, their contributing, their contributing.
They're contributing right-of-way on Morseville Parkway, Morseville Carpenter Road, rather.
$1,000.
Yeah.
The ready group is, that's, they're, they're sound development, I'm talking about the other.
So, so, but they're, they're, I should, there, there would potentially, based on current designs, obviously they're very preliminary, but there would potentially be easements along the, the out parcel and Morseville Square property entrance, that we did speak with them about the backup, dedicating those easements or, or basically, I think it would all be easements, there are no additional land right-of-way because they already dedicated it as part of their development, so it would really just be easements that they would dedicate as part of that.
I understand, I'm just trying to again, be fair across town, because we have this issue with Morseville McCrimmon's Extension. We were told that we get, you know, right-of-ways and.
Are, are we getting a signal, we're getting a signal there, right, a traffic light?
Where is that?
Near the intersection.
What intersection?
Uh, yeah, this one, this one?
Yeah, no.
Maybe, down the road, if it builds up.
Section, not currently. Lights associated with this project at all.
Yeah, yeah, as of right now, there's no new additional lights along the corridor.
If they build, definitely, we could, we could.
It'll happen one day, but Vicki will get a.
I will get a light, yes.
So Steve?
I like option one, because these have already been stated. Useful option, I like what the, what the group is contributing, so.
Steve?
I like option one.
For all reasons stated.
All right. So Rich?
Direction would be take option one, go talk to the property owners to kind of solidify that.
Yeah, but bring Liz with you, because if they say no to right-of-way or anything else, you know what, option three is looking good.
Always bring Liz.
Take option one work.
Yeah, make option one work.
Always bring Liz with you, good idea.
All right.
The last, the last discussion of the evening is that third option, which is a similar kind of discussion. Coming back to this, we had the option one, which was approximately 250-foot, that would be our typical, typical intersection spacing, as well as provide significant stacking for any development that could occur on the south side in the future. Option two, that was the 600-foot extension of essentially Town Hall Drive and about an 800-foot extension of what's called, I guess what we're calling South Page Street. Under that scenario, there would be a potential land swap opportunity with the neighboring property owner where we would need right-of-way here and potentially swap some land along the frontage of Morseville Carpenter Road to be incorporating their property.
And that, that would give them, we're talking about the T S G, right, this, the land swap, right?
Yes.
So that would give them better access to the road for where they want to build their.
The, the, the main, yes, they, they have access along Morseville Carpenter, although I don't know that they would actually get a driveway cut from DOT in the, on the actual frontage, they would likely still have to access back through Town Hall Drive. But it does provide them actual frontage on a collector road, which changes the dynamics of their approvals from a U D O standpoint for the size of building that they could achieve. Option number three was one, was the option that we came back to, worked with the design, the design team and the consultant. Essentially, the absolute minimum that, that intersection could be pushed back from Town Hall Drive would be approximately 100 feet. That's pretty much the minimum that DOT would allow in terms of allowing cars to stack up at that intersection to then get, to get through, and then realign Franklin Upchurch. Under this scenario, we're left with approximately half an acre, excuse me, yeah, I believe it's a half an acre, that gray area.
I'm having a hard time.
You want, you want these?
Is that good, or you want to go bigger?
Now, option three is new, this is a new thing. Can you kind of take us through that again, from the beginning?
So based on the last meeting, the, the request was made, what is the absolute minimum that we could do right now to be able to get access to the intersection? I think one of the, we had discussed was possibly coming off of the intersection, doing kind of a sweep, kind of sweeping curb. Unfortunately, geometrically, that wouldn't work from a road design standpoint. So the kind of minimum, absolute bare-bones minimum that we could do to achieve a connection to the intersection would be approximately 100 feet of extension of Town Hall Drive and realigning Franklin Upchurch to tee into that at the end. Knowing that in the future, whatever happens development-wise on the south side of the road here with the Go Transit proper, Go Triangle property that we're trying to purchase and any other development, if this road were remaining in the future, it would definitely have to be a right-in, right-out. But again, if development happens on that south side of the road, there's gonna be a lot of connectivity options and.
What would have to be right-in, right-out?
This, this, this road right here, essentially this median would have to be extended, so anybody coming from here have to go this way.
So you're saying, you're saying not, not at.
Not at current.
Not, not at Town Hall Drive, but at whatever we're calling this, Franklin Upchurch and Town Hall Extension.
Rich, can you go to the G I S R, Google Maps and expand on that to see how much land?
How much?
How much land on the T I A?
How much is left on the T I A property you're saying?
Rich, in that third drawing, you had a gray area kind of between Morseville Carpenter Road and that street, what is that?
Trees.
That, that's kind of no man's land unfortunately. Basically, what, what doing that kind of minimum option does is it leaves us with, again, about, about half of an acre, that's really not necessarily developable at this time. But again, if, if we're looking at this point to just get the connection done at the most economical way possible for now and let future development of the area occur, then in the future, we could look, you know, we could, we could leave that as a partial potentially and then realign Franklin Upchurch again in the future or, or abandon it if other connectivity allows for it.
Are those all considered collector roads on all three options?
Collector roads in terms of Franklin Upchurch or, no, the only collector road that would be in that location at this point would be Morseville Carpenter. The extension of Town Hall Drive, I'm not sure, is Town Hall Drive?
We have collector road.
So Town Hall.
The only option that resolves the access, direct frontage on the collector, or bear issue that we currently have is the most expensive option here. And the reason that is the case is you can abandon that portion of Franklin Upchurch. Additional purchase of land can occur if they're correctly running Morseville Carpenter.
So you're saying option, option two.
I just put the options again, I believe that was.
Option two would resolve the collector road issue without any, any influ, or you know, change.
The code, right, is how to say, purchase some additional land that's currently in that group.
But what difference does it make, it's all the same purpose, it's, it's collecting the, the traffic from, from all, from the Page Street. It's doing the same purpose.
The difference is, I mean, the simplistic level is not necessarily the best, but just big picture. Still, on the simplistic level, all that traffic, if they're on a major road, when they exit it on their site, they all have to go on that major road, and none of it's happening on the secondary roads that Tim Hill or Rosemont.
But for me, if I see it, all the traffic is going and coming to the Town Hall and then exiting out. And you take option one, option two, option three, it's a mixture of where those roads are going.
If I'm taking a look at the big picture, not, because that's wider, it lies townwide, not just to that site. And so that's the reason, the rationale behind that, not to say that there can't be a U D O text amendment, we can go, you know.
No, not for that, just.
I, I just wanted to say, we talked about addressing the issue, you know, potential self-resolving, if you will. The only one that truly does that is the most expensive option option two.
And that kind of tagging off of what Courtney was saying, so, because the collector designation isn't necessarily just the act of pulling cars, there's, there's average daily traffic numbers and all that that they have to meet to be able to meet that classification. So Franklin Upchurch, South Page Street, those roads, just, they, they don't generate enough traffic to meet that classification.
And all three options are covered by lap?
Good question.
No.
How many of those are covered by lap?
Option three is a pretty clear, it's, it's pretty clear that we could, we could include that as part of our operational agreements. Option one, we probably could make the argument, it'd be a little bit tougher, but I think we could probably make it. Option, option two is probably not, I don't know that we can make the argument that option two is part of our, really part of our project.
So, so can I ask a question, and if, just say we went with option three, that doesn't mean in the future, option two cannot occur in some manner. As development occurs.
Sure, you can do whatever you want.
Yeah.
Sure.
We would be eligible for.
Because I, I like option two, but I, I'm not sure I can.
You want to pay for it.
Yeah, I can't, I don't want to pay for it.
It's not affordable today.
Rich, on, I know you had the G I S up, between one and three. Rich, on, uh, but, I know you had the G I S up, between one and three, it looks like we're saving some of the TTA property with three, just moving that closer to, uh, which we, which was one of the benefits of two, I think people said.
Right.
So, is there, um, I mean, you're talking about a hundred, hundred-foot, uh, movement?
About a hundred and fifty feet, cause this was two hundred and fifty feet to here, uh, in this scenario, it's only a hundred.
Probably a, a hundred feet by, what does that look like, five hundred feet or so? Five, six hundred feet?
Approximately.
You're talking about an acre?
Six hundred and fifty feet, yeah.
Right? Is that a forty-two thousand feet, so about an acre, is what you'd be saving with three versus one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, uh, when, when the consultants provided this initial one here, I think it was their, well, one, they had to meet the separation here from an intersection standpoint, from typical guidelines, uh, but also, it was an attempt to kinda leave a usable parcel of some sort, um, between the Morseville Carpenter right-of-way and what would be the future Franklin Upchurch, uh, given the shape of the parcel, I guess you could.
Do you think, do you think whether this achieved or not?
Right.
Are you saying that option one, that green space is a usable piece of land? Or, that, that piece of land is usable?
Closer to the intersection, sure.
It's approximately an acre of land, um, this thinner area here, I, I don't know that it would meet, or, I, I don't know exactly from a development standpoint, what it would help, other than a density calculation or something like that, but, or a lot coverage calculation, but, uh, this smaller area here may or may not be developable, depending on buffers.
You could put a, you could put a small building there.
I'm getting punchy.
Yeah. All right, um, any other questions for Rich on this?
Do you need a decision tonight to help you progress this for tomorrow?
If you're prepared with a decision, I'd love to have one, but, uh, if you need till tomorrow to think about it, uh, certainly, uh, as of right now, I think that the, the consultant is assuming at a minimum, there's gonna be a hundred feet heading in this direction, um, so that they can at least continue with the main stem of the road, um, kinda medium design.
Yeah, I like that part, for lap funding, so.
But, uh, you know, just one thing with all these, you know, this is obviously something that wasn't in our initial scope, so the quicker we can get an answer on which one of these options we wanna do, the quicker I can get a proposal back from them of how much it's gonna cost for additional survey, environmental, and, and design work, uh, and that's for basically all three of the elements today.
Does anyone need more time? Uh, I'm ready to give my opinion tonight.
I appreciate this third option, because I was really kind of stuck.
Yeah, me too.
Last time.
Thank you.
So, three, three?
Three.
Anyone?
Three.
Liz?
Liz.
Four?
Four.
Okay, so.
So option three, we're good.
Yeah.
Uh, for the, for decision number three, we're gonna go, uh, give direction to get a proposal for option number three for design and, uh, permitting and environmental, uh, just to recap too, so for decision number two.
And three, what do we do in the middle, the gray area?
Yeah, bowling alley or something?
Uh, entryway to the town.
Yeah.
Monument. A little green, green, green space, pocket park.
Pretty.
We, 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 I will let you all decide in the future, what you'd like to do with that property, but for now, uh.
Total, I believe it's about twenty thousand square feet, so about that acre, but, um, it is obviously a, a, a very odd shape, as well as we will have Morseville Carpenter Road right-of-way, uh, right next to it, so, considering what to put there may just be something you think about.
Thank you.
So for decision number two, we're gonna go ahead and try to solidify the agreement, uh, with the property owners on this, and if that doesn't, uh.
Yep, exactly.
Go the way we hope.
Yeah.
Uh, if Liz can't make that happen, Subcouncilor Johnson can't make that happen, we will go with option number three, and for decision number one, I will ask them to try to run the noise model with the five-lane section as soon as possible, so that we can bring that back.
As long as that doesn't delay everything, but if we can get a, kind of a noi- quick noise study on that to, at least, is it in or out of play, type of thing, I think it's an important thing to know, so.
Okay.
Okay.
The grid in the right direction.
Good.
So that would mean you do not need a work session tomorrow.
I think I've got my direction, unless somehow they get me the noise study back by tomorrow.
Yeah, before midnight tomorrow, maybe?
It's always in your hands to do that.
Oh, sure, I always blame those. All right, Rich, anything else?
I just wanna thank you for letting me speak before eleven o'clock tonight.
Thank you.
Give her again, though.
Yeah, wow. So we covered a lot of things tonight, and I appreciate everyone's, um, getting through it so quickly, uh, library, farmer's market, Morseville Carpenter Road, McCrimmon Parkway Extension, uh, anything else?[1693.04]